All right, let's just go to council comments and future agenda. Let's focus on council comments. I do not see any hands. Oh, sorry, Paula.
No, that's good. I braced it late, but I just want to point out the everything. I was in a meeting about an hour or so ago and it was pointed out how invaluable some of the people are that have been working on the various problems that not only we at the city dealing with, but at the county level, the hospital, and I just want to put my appreciation out there to everybody who is gathering together to work as a community and do the best we can in this really tenuous situation. I know that impacting people in all sorts of different ways, whether it's health or the economy, their homes, taking care of kids all day long while they're trying to work, and I just want to thank the community for coming together to do this.
Thanks, Paula. Tony, did you have your hand up?
I just enjoyed the back page of the paper and I didn't just leave the meeting. It was an unfortunate picture, but I was listening if anyone cared. Oh, right. Use that picture. Thank you, Glenn Wood Post Independent, but thank you.
All right, council cop.
I just wanted to say and repeat from earlier today, there was a really nice opinion piece in the Post today from Mayor Dan Richardson in Carbondale. And just letting people know that so many people are out of work right now, and if people are, if you are out of work or having trouble paying your rent, paying your mortgage, it's a great time to reach out to your landlord, reach out to your mortgage holder, the bank or whoever that may be, and talk to them about the issues that are coming up. There are different remedies that they can do from just postponing rent for a while or postponing mortgage payments. There's also assistance available through Garfield County Health and Human Services website. So there was some information on links in that article in the PI today. So take a look at that and please be patient as we all get through this together and be compassionate about your renters, if you're a landlord, and seek help if you're having trouble making your mortgage payment.
Thank you. That's great information, Shelley. Appreciate it. Steve?
You know, I just briefly, I mean, these are troubling times and, but already I'm getting comments about my attire here from the public, and I just want to say that I had no idea when we did this virtual thing, we would end up in the newspaper, and I wasn't at all prepared last time, and so I made myself more prepared this time. That's why I've dressed for it, doing my part.
We appreciate you doing your part, Steve. All right, I have been asked to by our clerk that we pass on to all the voters out there that please sign the back of your ballot. We have a ballot. If you haven't checked your mail in a couple of days or you just don't open it very often, the city is looking to ask the voters for authorization to dispose of, I believe, 19 acres and an access road. That is the former MOC, which is now an abandoned, falling down building. So without advocating at all on which way you should vote, I would just ask that you please fill out your, when you vote, to make sure you sign the back of the document, drop it off before April 14th, correct, Deborah?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I also had some citizen, I don't know if it's a complaint, but you know, something to kind of put back to you guys is, out of all the items that are considered essential and that are exempt, I wouldn't mind having a brief conversation about do, what do we think about, and we can absolutely address this at some point, and maybe we should reserve it for the regular session agenda, when we're going to be talking about transportation, we're going to be talking about lodging, construction, and maybe it'll fit in somewhere in there, but if it doesn't, I wanted to bring up Glowett Springs Golf Course, which is privately owned, but it is, it is right now operating. Their website, you know, says that their restaurant is open, serving snacks, and you know, maybe we can have a conversation today about whether we think that that is a essential service, or if it's in the realm of getting out and being active. I don't know, but I just know I had a comment from that today, and it struck me as like, what, really? Golf courses are open? But then I kind of thought about it a little bit, and it doesn't, I don't know. I don't know. So I guess I'm just throwing it back to you guys to see if you wanted to discuss that. Charlie?
Yeah, the, there was an article in the paper about the golf courses, Post Independent a couple of days ago, and the local golf course said they were, that park itself wasn't open, they were going to have a stacked cart out of the course, and they were maintaining social distancing. And the Denver Post had a picture of these guys in the driving range, standing right next to each other this morning. Golf courses barely are exempt from the governor's order, but I, at least the papers, that the Glowett Golf Course was not having their stack bar open.
Steve?
You know, I really, I really believe that we need to all maintain our social distancing, and if you're not doing it on the golf course, you're probably not doing it anywhere else either, but I think that also outdoor activity is extremely important for us to maintain our sanity. I don't really quite understand why tennis courts are closed. I think there should be something on the gate that says, you know, you can only play with the people that you reside with, but, so I think it's important to have golf courses open. You can't have carts out there. Everybody's going to have to walk the course. You could have your own personal pull cart, right? And everybody needs to stay away from each other. It's not a close contact sport like basketball or some other, you know, things. I think golf and tennis and pickleball. Marilyn and I have been volleying a pickleball, I know that'll surprise a lot of people, almost every day, and it has been great to help alleviate the anxiety and stress of the situation.
Okay, Tony?
As an avid, very bad golfer, I don't see, I think there has to be some opportunity for recreating. I think everyone has an email about tennis. I mean, if people are careful and don't do stupid things, I'd like to provide them with as many activities as we can, especially outside as it gets warmer and nicer. But I mean, I thought if we make the rules clear at our golf courts, I don't see a huge difference with that. And Jonathan, what's essentially the difference between a snack bar where you can grab something to go than a Wendy's or the Super Bowl game? So as long as they're not eating at the restaurant.
Right.
I'm open to whatever reason to say thanks.
Paula?
Shelley was before me, but I'll go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So my concern is oversight. I agree with Steve that, you know, and with Tony, that being outside, you know, it's going to be really important to me. It's really important, but I don't want to put somebody like Brian at a place where he's got to be checking, you know, the tennis courts and the volleyball courts and the basketball courts. So we've got to find some kind of balance in there to not require the oversight and allow trust, but I think right now people are a little bit confused anyways on what the rules are. I've had conversations with people on the governor's order for staying at home and sheltering in place until April 11th versus the president's orders to keep your social distancing to less than 10 people. So there's so much confusion out there on all the different levels of what government is doing what. So I think whatever we do, we just need to be really clear about it on signage at these locations that we're responsible for, whether it's a tennis court or, I don't know where we would stand on the golf course because we don't own it, but that's something to think about.
Go ahead, Deborah.
If I may specifically, in tennis courts, we've made the decision to shut them along with all the region areas around us. So I mean, that, if that is something that if you guys want to do, you can certainly direct us to do it. Paula, it's right, oversight would be a problem. Like I won't send employees out there to make sure everyone is behaving. If you guys want, you know, take a different route on the tennis courts, just so you know, but we have shut them. You guys certainly will shut them.
Somebody give me any feedback?
Yeah.
I do.
I'm hearing it.
Sounds like it might have passed? Okay. Sorry, I was scrolling over to the mute all real quick, but I think that was a feedback issue. So if we have similar instances like that, I'll just mute all and see if we can get past it and just take a little bit of a break. Shelley?
I won't repeat comments here. I kind of agree with Steve. If we can figure out how to let people recreate and do things safely, things like tennis or golf where, and they can keep social distancing, I see it as other activities where it's helpful to get outside, but I understand the policing issue, so that's something we need to think about and address. Jonathan, for you, I just wanted to ask, did we do public comments? Do you want to take comments for the public or are we still in council comments?
We're in pre-meeting council comments right now.
Okay.
We have not adjourned the meeting.
Okay.
It's hard to tell sometimes.
Commence the meeting or commence the meeting?
Commence, yes, start the meeting.
Yes, Steve Davis.
You know, just briefly, I want to say there is no way that we can police the world. We can't send officers out or park personnel out trying to make sure that when you're walking through a park, you're not getting too close to somebody else. People by now, surely you get it, right? You have to understand, and we just can't, we can't police all that. I think, you know, Marilyn and I going on and the tennis court every evening and hitting our pickleball around, nobody has to monitor that. You know, if there's a sign that says that you have to be in the same household, and if people don't get that, I don't know, I don't know what more you can do.
Rick?
So I don't know what the situation is at Sayer Park, but you do have some basketball courts that are right next to tennis courts, and people see people out batting a tennis ball around. It's easy to say, well, then, you know, maybe the basketball thing's okay. I just don't know if we have signage up there that would say no basketball, and then if we were like flip the sign over and say, but you can play tennis, you know, so it's, it is a huge enforcement issue. I mean, if, you know, and I agree with Steve, you can't be everywhere, you can't enforce everything, but it's just sort of a ripple. And then, you know, I have friends that live up on the Carbondale Golf Course, Mike Glenwood at Carbondale, and they're talking about, you know, watching people walking almost hand in hand down playing golf and sharing clubs and putters and things like that on the green. So it all boils down to some responsibility, but I guess the question for the council is how much you want to nudge people, because, you know, it's obvious that people want to get back to normal just as quick as they can. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Guys really want to be making all these individual decisions, because the more you make them, the more people are going to go to you because they know you can override my decision.
Right.
If you have total authority to do, you're just putting yourself in a position where every special interest is going to come to you.
Sorry, I muted everybody for a second. I apologize. I would agree with Deborah that we are going to get people that are now going to be basketball players that are going to say, hey, we're just going to play horse. Or what's the difference between what we're going to do? I think a consistent policy for all of the city's amenities are, if we do not, if it's not a necessary core competency central to the operations of the city, right now, we just don't do it. I think, you know, the golf courses, you know, I'm fine, they're a private, you know, entity, but I think that for, you know, the tennis right now, if we allow that and we overruled Deborah, then all of a sudden, we're going to be asking, they're going to have basketball players asking to play knockout or horse, and they're going to have people playing horseshoes and saying, it will never end. And I think it's a kind of a blanket prohibition on park amenities. You know, we can address this again in two weeks, and we probably will, but I think the idea is, you know, at least for me, let's not start allowing the public to chip away at our public policy that is supported by other communities all around us. So unless, unless somebody wants to, you know, make a strong case for tennis, pickleball, basketball, or other, any other specific ones, it sounds like we're okay probably with maybe not taking action or discussing, if we want to discuss golf later, but unless somebody really wants to die on the hill of allowing tennis players to play, do we still support Deborah and staff's recommendation to close all park amenities other than the park itself? I will take that silence as consent. All right, and I do see, just for the folks in the audience, I do see that there's 28 attendees and someone has their hand up just during this portion, and I know it's really difficult because it's not, it doesn't feel normal. We will take public comment when we adjourn, adjourn, not adjourn. What is it, Tony? When we commence?
Commence.
Convene.
Convene, thank you. That's the word I was looking for. When we convene, convene our regular session, we'll have public comment, and we'll have three minutes for anybody to comment on items not related to, that are not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, please wait till that item comes up to comment. So Annette, I see you. I will like, I would love to allow you to talk because I'm sure you have some great information, but if you could reserve those comments probably for about 10 minutes, that would be great. Keep your hand up, though. And that goes for anybody else that's out there. If you can, go to the bottom of your screen, click on participants, it'll bring up everybody in the audience. I see some really great participation, so thank you very much, everybody, for showing up. Is there any other council comments? We have about two minutes before the regular council meeting commences, but are there any other comments or agenda changes that folks have? Okay. Hi, Tony.
Jonathan, I would just say that I appreciate what Deborah said. You know, there are a lot of special interests out there. She, given her some extraordinary powers, I think they'll rely on that, and because otherwise, she's correct, you know, in the croquet association Glowett Springs, which I'm just starting by, if you're interested, is going to come and say, well, why can't we play croquet? We use separate mallets, and we don't touch, you know, it's just every group, and I think we have to have some consistency. So thank you, Deborah.
Staff, staff like us, we're going to be making some hard decisions tonight and having some difficult conversations, and our city attorney and city manager and her staff are making calls like this every, probably every hour of every day and things that we don't even, can't even contemplate. So if we think we're in a hard decision mode with, with the community and always asking, we just need to understand how our city attorney, city manager probably faced at all points. So thank you. Shelley?
I would just like to say, I think we should point out that this is not forever. This is hopefully not a long-term thing, and we should revisit it next meeting, just the overall policy on city facilities and things like that.
Yeah, I agree. I think we're going to be seeing hopefully some more data as more testing becomes available and as these stay in place nationwide and locally and statewide are, you know, we're going to see hopefully a curve starting to bend, and when we start seeing some of that data, I think we'll be able to start having some more intelligent conversation. It's just really, really early to start talking about relaxing standards right now.
Yeah, we just need to hang in there right now.
I agree. All right, with that, let's, let's start our regular session agenda. That's the gavel visually. Catherine, could you do roll call?
Wilman?
Here.
Voorhees?
Yo.
Here. Otis?
Here.
Davis?
Still here.
Beth? Hershey?
Yes, here.
All right. It says Pledge of Allegiance, but I am tethered to my laptop unless you're making Tony. Does anybody have a strong opinion whether we want to turn around and stand at some point, or are we good kind of rolling through that? Okay, as long as we're good and no one has a strong opinion, let's go to agenda changes and conflicts of interest. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest potentially this evening?
None.
Okay. Seeing none or hearing none as well. We will go to citizens appearing before council. Looks like we have 31 potential attendees. We have hands up. This is fantastic. I really appreciate folks coming out, and by coming out, I mean sitting at their laptop and watching us. So please limit your comments to three minutes, as long as it's items not appearing on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, please reserve your comments for when that item comes. We shouldn't have a very long meeting tonight, so if you can be patient with us, announce your name, your address, and, and I will start to call people. Annette, you've had your hand up a while, so you're on.
I'm muted.
I think she's muted.
That would be yourself, Annette. I, okay, there you go. Annette? Hello? All right, Annette, you know what? Keep your hand up, and we will come back to you if we're able to. I'm going to move now to, there's a, someone called user. So let's see, I'm going to allow user to talk. I don't know who this is, but you're on.
He's muted, Jonathan.
I meant, you're on. You need, you also need to unmute yourself, folks that are logged on. It's in the bottom left-hand corner. There's a bottom item called mute and unmute. So there you go, user.
Hello. Hello, Jonathan. Ned Carter, Blake Avenue.
Hi, Ned.
I have some questions about, well, what I've seen going on, specifically, as an example, house cleaners. I see them come and go. I had an argument with Crystal Property Management that their cleaners and their maintenance people are essential employees. Not you, when, when, when they're cleaning and they, where I live, Crystal appears to have the contract, I observed the people doing the cleaning using Pine Sol. Pine Sol is not a disinfectant cleaner, but they're claiming they're sanitizing. That concerns me. I was walking around Glenwood a couple of days ago, and I observed construction going on. I spoke with a friend of mine a day or so ago, and he said, construction is continuing at Valley View Hospital, but Vale, Eagle, Aspen, Pittkin County have shut down construction. And I see these people working close proximity to each other, and this concerns me. I could understand claiming that maintenance, if they were working on a boiler or critical systems, could be essential, but today I observed a Crystal Property Management employee doing some painting, and I really would like some direction from the city of Glenwood Springs. What is essential? Because this young person was working in an old, an 80-plus year old's apartment, she was there, and has some, some underlying medical issues that make her at risk. And with that, I think I'm done, and I'd like to say thank you for setting this up, and it's better than not having any say.
I'm trying to, we have the timer in front of us. I'm trying now.
1:26, and I don't know what I can do.
I'm trying to get back, oh, there we go. Exit fullscreen, okay. Sorry, folks, just wait with me one second. I'm trying to, there we go. That's what I'm familiar with. Hey, thank you very much, Ned. Appreciate that. I think we are going to talk about specifically construction and maintenance tonight is on the agenda under a different item, but I appreciate your comments, and we'll probably address those later. So thank you. Annette, are you able to come back to us, or have you figured out? Okay, Annette, I'm going to go to Cindy right now. Cindy, you need to go to the left-hand bottom corner and click yourself unmute. There you go.
Hello?
Hello.
Cindy Savato, 319 Park Drive in Glenwood. We are still marching ahead slowly with our farmer's market and moving to 7th Street. Yes, Steve, I'm just hoping that we, the markets are essentials, and we will be going along with any guidelines that we need to. The other question I have is, I see a lot of information about the restaurants, they're listed in the newspaper, I've got mailings about them to support them because you can get takeout, but what can the city do for the small downtown or all over town businesses that have just had to close? And they don't have takeout service. There are hairdressers and clothing boutiques. Is there a way that you can start? Maybe when it's over, you have some tax-free days or some advertising to say, don't forget them, we can do, I don't know. We need to not eliminate them from all of the advertising supporting restaurants. That's all I got.
Thanks, Cindy.
Yeah, thank you very much, Cindy.
Yeah.
All right, I will make, let's see, I'm looking, yes, Deborah?
I was just going to say, I just wanted to let Cindy know that, no, we have definitely not forgotten retail business. We've been working with the, am I muted?
No, I just, I was acknowledging that I was going to get Steve. I didn't see his hand until now. I'm sorry, Deborah. Go ahead.
I've been working, we've been working with the Post Independent and the Chamber to try to get small retail, a online presence, and then I think the Post Independent was going to try to help them more. The DDA is, Steve can probably tell you more about that, is also working with us on a program maybe, so I can't tell you exactly what we're going to do, but I can assure you, we're working towards that.
Thanks, Deborah. Steve, go ahead.
Cindy, I appreciate those comments for many obvious reasons, and I just wanted to say that the DDA is working on that, and we are now not just having monthly meetings with the DDA, but it's almost weekly or every 10 days, readdressing some of these things and, you know, how we're going to affect that recovery effort. So I'm there beating that drum.
Thanks, Steve. One last time, Annette, I'm going to try to get you. Annette, you are muted, so go to your bottom left-hand corner and click unmute, and let us have it.
Hey, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes. Well, this is Frank with Annette here. I've been in the valley 20 years, care for the people. Care for the people around here. I've been French and I mean, on French news every day also. And in America, we are about nine days behind the events and what's happening in France. They have a lot more protection and less contacts between people. And I want to push that forward, that message here. We are a little behind on that. And whatever things you decide to do for the city, it needs to be pushed in that direction where we need to limit the contacts between people. We don't know how that thing travels yet fully. And the less contact we have, the better will be, the sooner we'll recover. An example, in Grand Junction, people, they live the normal way. They don't know what's happening over there. They don't seem to. Everybody's outside shopping and kids outside. And, and it's scaring me. I see every day what's happening in France and it's, it's, it's serious and it's coming here soon. That thing is planting little seeds everywhere and people don't know it yet. But it's going to spread more and we're going to get hit really soon, really big. So that's all I have to say to that.
Au revoir.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's just great comments. Just so folks know, I, if you go on the Eagle County website, I believe, I didn't check it today, but as of yesterday, they were up to 330 confirmed cases as of yesterday. Garfield County was at 35 and Pittkin County was at 34. So we have nearly 400 cases. I guess that would be exactly for over 400 cases confirmed in the three county region. And it'd be interesting to find out what it is as of today. But yeah, just, just, we are taking this incredibly serious. I mean, we're, we're talking about tennis courts and whether people should be playing tennis. And those are the kind of conversations we're having right now. And that, that I think is indicative of the, the level of seriousness we're all taking it. So I just want to assure you that we're doing that. Bringing up my agenda.
Would you like what the data is?
That would be great, Deborah, thank you.
At Eagle, it's 314. Garfield, it's 43. And Pittkin, it's 36.
So yesterday, Garfield was at 35. A week ago, Garfield was at 23. Two weeks ago, Garfield County was at 14. All right. Sorry, enough. Anybody else who wants to participate, who's an attendee calling on the phone? Our IT person has told me that people can raise their hand by pressing star nine. So if you are on the phone and you want to give public comment, I'll wait. I don't know, 15 seconds, because that sounds like a long time. If you want to push star nine and participate, I see a couple of people who just have phone numbers on here. So I'll just wait for 15 minutes and allow you to do that. Okay, I do have a comment here. It is, move this along. Okay. Next on the agenda, council comments. Counselors.
Sorry, I have one.
Yeah, go ahead, Paula.
Oh, okay. I love these Facebook meetings that we're having. That was great. I love these Facebook meetings that we're having every day. I'm not every day. The city is putting together to share information with our community like Shelley today and Jonathan yesterday. And I just wanted to remind people that tomorrow we have another one at three o'clock and it is really directed at our Spanish-speaking audience. We're going to be providing information. Sorry, I'm reading this off to the side. I'll put it in front of me. From our public health, again, repetitive stuff that you've done already, Jonathan, but this will be Spanish language. I'm going to apologize upfront. I do not speak Spanish, but I get to introduce everything. And then we're very lucky that Brisa Chavez is going to take over a lot of that. And Dr. Alan Vargas at Grand River Health is also going to participate. So just to put it out there to the community as a whole, that we will have this at three o'clock tomorrow.
Thanks, Paula. Charlie.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank the city staff. They've done an exemplary job over the last couple of weeks. And I know that Deborah and others are working, I wouldn't say around the clock, but pretty darned close to that. And that includes our police department, fire department, most people. I think we also need to do a shout out to the public health workers in our community. I can't even imagine what they're going through. At Valley View Hospital, Grand River and the Aspen Hospital. Those people are working very hard and in very difficult circumstances. And then finally, I guess to the citizens or our community, I know this is very difficult for our citizens, but we're trying to do everything we can, as you've heard, to try to make this a positive environment in a very negative time. And in that regard, I want anyone to know, and I think all the council will join us, is if you need to contact any of us, feel free to call, call us. Our numbers are on the website or our emails are on the website. I've gotten a couple of calls and comments. I'm trying to get back to anybody that reaches out to me, but I think it's very important. And if I can't get, don't have the answer when I talk to you, I'll try to get it, get back to you. And I'm sure everybody else shares that. And then I guess my final comment is I, I think we need to, as a city council and as the city begin to talk about the big economic impact that's going to happen to this community. Where we're basically, some of our heavy spring break time, which is a high sales tax revenue month. April's going to continue into that. I think we need to begin looking at that long-term. And I know I saw some things from Mr. Boyd today, which I really appreciated on some of the thoughts on that. But we really need to begin looking at that as early as our next meeting is what we have to do. And I think things that the city staff is doing right now is excellent. But I just think we as a council need to start talking about the economic impacts. And we're not going to know a lot unfortunately for a couple of months, because the way the reporting for sales tax comes in is almost a month after that, after it's over. So we just need to keep that in a forefront in our meetings over the next three or four meetings. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Rick.
Yeah, I'd just like to give a shout out to some of the restaurants who are providing food for people for free. I think that's now totally beyond the call of duty. And I think it's just representative of the kind of people that we have in this community. And I think we can do this. We've got some tough, tough decisions, some that we'll be making tonight, but it's definitely time to put on our seat belts and stay the course. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Appreciate that. Anybody else? All right. Seeing none. We will go to item number seven, consent agenda.
I moved for the approval of consent agenda.
Been moved by Charlie, seconded by Shelley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. First item of the regular agenda, item number eight, 25. Okay. Item number eight, consideration of appeal of P and Z Commission denial of special use permit for personal care boarding home is provided in muni code. This item has been moved to the April 16th, 2020 agenda. We're moving along. Item number nine, community gardens.
Jonathan, do you want to take 10 and 11, since they're continuations and just get those out of the way?
Sure, sure. We'll jump ahead. I'll just read the, the items and just, and then continue on. Continued from March 5th, the resolution 20-10, resolution of City Council of City Glenwood Springs amending resolution 2018-60, relating to the creation of Glenwood Springs Urban Renewal Authority. This item is to be continued to May 17th, 2020.
May 7th. And we're going to need a motion on these.
May 7th. I'm sorry. Okay, so do we need a motion? Do I have a motion for item eight? Planning file. Okay, it's been moved by Shelley.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number 10, I just read, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Charlie.
Second.
Seconded by Paula. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Jen has something to say.
Actually, I would like it if you could make a motion on the one that was previous to these, the appeal as well, to actually move that.
They already did.
We did.
We did. Okay. I thought you just.
No. He did eight, then 10, and now we're on 11.
Sorry.
No, it's all good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Item number 11, continued from March 5th, resolution 2020-9, resolution of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, amending resolution 2018-61 and approving the amended West Glenwood Springs Urban Renewal Authority, or Urban Renewal Plan. Do I have a motion to continue that item to May 7th, 2020? Moved by Rick, seconded by
Shelley.
Shelley, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Paulie, speak up.
I guess so. I'm going to have to be louder.
I think you are, yeah, sorry. Motion carries unanimously?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Tony, for like the verbal stuff. That's, that's actually really helpful. If people can, you know, raise hands or give thumbs up, that's, that's helpful to me. All right. We're going to go back to item number nine, community gardens. Deborah.
I think Brian is going to mainly handle this, if Brian can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. So we just want to do some preliminary planning with council to look at different options for supplementing food supplies for the community. Staff have been coordinating with Food Bank of the Rockies as well as Lift Up to provide donation drop-off sites and also senior drive-through meal pickup sites, community food pantry locations. We've had one over at the high school parking lot last week. And then looking at other ways that we can help limit limit any disruption to, to food access. Several of the grocery stores are implementing different policies to make sure that we have a consistent flow of, of food, limiting quantities to help reduce hoarding. We're also evaluating a number of options to provide supplemental food access and just want to talk about some of those options with council and get some of your thoughts on those. One of those, first off, is the expansion of existing community gardens. So right now we have two gardens currently in the city, one at Cardiff and then one at Wilson, just behind the community center. Gardens currently are leased out to nonprofit organizations. The Wilson Garden just opened last week and could possibly be expanded to include 80 additional plots. These plots would be given out to families in the community and we'd come up with some sort of a rotational schedule to limit demount people that are attending the plots at any one given time. Typically, produce growing season is mid-May through October. So we're just coming up to the time that we'd be able to get the, the plots prepped and built and installed. It'll cost us somewhere around $20,000, $25,000 to get everything together. That's all the infrastructure, the building, the supplies, everything to get going on those. Another idea is to provide satellite locations because the community gardens aren't necessarily centrally located. And if there's a disruption to our transportation services, some members of the community might have difficulty in getting to those two gardens. So we could provide a number of smaller garden plots around the city. We've identified I think about 10 different locations, a lot of them in different pocket parks. The old wastewater plant lot is also an option. And a couple of our other parks where that would be an appropriate location to do those. Each of these locations have access to water and we could set up the plots fairly easily and quickly, similar to the community gardens. We're also looking at different large-scale production options, such as leasing out some land, possibly in silts or Newcastle, and having city-operated produce production there. We have about six greenhouses that have told us they're, they're willing to work with us to produce produce. Several of them have large, large tracts of land that we're able to do quite a bit of growing. That would be turned over with pulling other small farming areas around the, the region for a co-op. That would allow local producers and family gardens, small farms, things like that, to be able to pull all those resources together for families that are low income. We are, we are watching and we have some concern that there is going to be some concern with food access, especially as families are starting to go without wages. And Food Bank of the Rockies has especially been watching that very carefully. A couple of other things we're doing, different efforts that we're doing with them is preparing information on our website with links to the different community gardens that are helping us pull together resources and also informations for families that would like to grow their own produce at home. And we'll continue to work with grocers. And this really is a mass coordinated effort, multi-county effort to provide food access resources and make sure that that availability is not disrupted. Some of the things that we'll want to look at with a community garden option is just that site management. How do we give out those plots? Do we have a stipulation on requirement for who qualifies to get a plot? We don't know what the demand would be if we were to open that up. Also, just making sure that we have appropriate community distancing considerations in place, that we have proper PPEs for anyone that are working the plots. And then we'll continue to monitor food supply chains and hopefully anticipate any shortages. Obviously, growing food takes a little time. And so we do need to have a little preliminary planning and prep and, and be thinking ahead of how, how can we best provide these resources to community members? So we're looking for council just to have that discussion on what they think of some of those options and if they have any direction for staff and how they'd like us to proceed.
Thanks, Brian. Looks like we have a question from Paula and then Charlie.
Hey, Brian, you mentioned you were leasing these. What's the cost to lease them? And then number two, can they offset that cost by offering to contribute part of that produce to Lift Up or other organizations? Or has that even been talked about?
So these, these nonprofits lease them from the city. They're on city property. I can, I'll, I can send you the, the contract info for those. We do it on a yearly lease. It's pretty negligible as far as any revenue to the city. But they are more than happy to help us with any resources or management of the, of the gardens for community produce growing.
Thanks.
Thanks. Charlie.
Hey, Brian, did I understand that the ocean, you could increase it by 80 to 100 plots? And that would be 20, $25,000? Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, that's right. We, we do need to have some of that footprint right now. That is how many plots we can fit into the fenced area, just to keep it free from two-foot and four-foot bandits. But we do need to have some footprint for beehives and some of the, the water infrastructure and sheds and different things like that. So probably closer to 80, maybe even just a little bit less than that. Really depends on also on how far we want to space the plots with social distancing considerations.
So we're looking at $300 a plot roughly. Over that range, okay.
Planning on going, I'm not saying we're going to get it, but like you can go after $25,000 in the state of Colorado every two weeks. This was going to be our first request.
Where's that from, Deborah?
The state of Colorado has set up like an emergency fund that you can apply to every two weeks for up to $25,000. Just kind of throwing this idea out there. If you guys, you know, are interested in it tonight.
All right. Thanks, Deborah. Shelley. And then Paula, begin.
Okay. To staff and Brian and Deborah, I'd like to say thanks so much for bringing this forward. I think it's a great idea and I really like the aspect too, if it's a regional effort. If you're looking at the larger food production, especially, I think that would be important to work regionally on that. Brian, I had a question for you. Have, have you done any gauging or surveying? Brian, I had a question for you. Have, have you done any gauging or surveying of the community to see how much interest there would be in uptake on, on additional plots? And some of, some of the plots located satellite areas in town?
We haven't done a, a community needs assessment yet. We've only just been trying to pull together all the resources and, and the right people, and kind of understand the costs, and, and what is viable and what's not. Currently, I know the Wolfson Gardens are full, and they have nine people on the waiting list.
Okay.
I imagine that, that whatever we build will fill up.
Right, right. Especially in this time. I, I guess as far as questions, that was my only question on, on doing a quick gauge of the community. And also, this seems like a good operation to engage a lot of volunteers. You know, there's quite a few master gardeners in town and garden club and all of that. Would they be involved in this also?
Yeah, we've had a real great response and, and from everyone willing to help however they can. Like I said, we have, we have six greenhouses that are willing to help out. We have five consultants that have all said, hey, if you want to go forward with this, we'll, we'll do what we can to help you. So, yeah, no, no shortage of, of people willing to step up.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Paula?
Not that you can predict, or I can predict, Brian, but do you see this as a one-year thing? Or do you see it going out for a couple of years as we develop these garden spaces and that type of thing?
Well, I, I think, you know, you build it, they'll come. I mean, our community gardens are filled right now with what we have. You know, when we get out of the, the crisis mode, the infrastructure will still be there, and we'll, we'll just continue to, to operate. We'll probably hand it back over to the community garden nonprofits to, to manage those and, and distribute those out to people who apply at that point.
Thanks.
Charlie, another question?
No, I have a comment. Are we comments or just still questions?
Still questions?
Question time.
Okay, I'll hold.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Is this something I need to open up to public comment? Yeah, we'll open up to public comment. Paula, did you have another question for staff, or did you have a comment?
No, I'm just trying to manipulate my computer. Sorry.
Okay. All right. I do not see any hands raised, so absolutely no one has any interest in making comments for this. But it seems like, I'll bring it back to council for questions and/or motion. Counsel Hershey?
I just have a comment. You know, gardening is a hobby. It's a fun hobby, but people are gonna have to do other things. I don't see the city of Glenwood Springs getting anywhere near to producing any kind of amount of food that could feed any number of people. The logistics just don't work. So, while this is an interesting idea, I think it requires a lot more planning. So, I'm not looking to spend any money at all, especially given, like Charlie was saying at the beginning of this meeting about this economic downturn we're about to hit. We need to be very cautious, and I'm not going to agree to spend any on something as speculative as this. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Charlie, and then Shelley.
Oh, I, I agree, Tony. I don't think we have money to spend, but from what I understood from Deborah is there might be a grant available in the next few weeks. I think we should pursue the grant, and if we get that, then let's talk about how we can pursue that and make this available. I agree, Tony, we're not gonna create a, you know, produce section like city market, but it might help, you know, five or 10 families that can't afford to buy produce, produce some of that during the summer themselves. And if we can do it for free or at a very low cost, I certainly would support it. So, I would encourage the staff to make an application for that grant.
Thanks, Charlie. Shelley?
I guess I would beg to differ a little bit on that production side of it. I think small garden plots, and even the small one that we have in our, my backyard here, can produce a lot of food and a lot of, especially zucchini in this area, but a lot of different produce, beans. And there's a lot of productive gardening that can take place, and you'd be surprised at the amount of food that can be produced. So, if there's interest out there in the community and a will to do this, I, I certainly support moving this forward, and especially if we can get a grant to make it happen from the state.
Paula?
I think when you, following to Shelley, I think when we look at lower-income families, most of those, or many of those people are in more condensed neighborhoods, apartment buildings, complexes, that type of stuff. And to offer an opportunity for a garden space, especially if we can make sure that it's accessible and not expensive to them, could make a difference this year as we look at loss of jobs and that type of thing. As Shelley said, you know, we have a small garden, and as Tony said, mine is more of a hobby, but I know people that do use the resources of the food that come through their gardens and keep it on their table through the summer. And it starts in late May and goes all the way till September, so I know it's a source of food that's adequate.
And it's healthy.
Steve? Steve Davis, you're on mute right now?
Oh, good, because I didn't want to hear what I just said anyway.
I want to hear it.
No, I, you know, I, I, I can make an argument on both sides of this thing. I, if there are, if we can make space available out at the, at the Wolfson Garden by getting a grant to, you know, I think we, that'd be, make a, that'd be a good idea, probably to expand that and then see how it fills. I don't think that the government should be in the farming business. But if people are planting out there, and, and you figure out some way to share it with your community, then I think that would be great. I, I wouldn't be interested in having little garden spots all over town that later we may have other uses for, that we would never be able to recapture as a result of that. But I think it makes sense to expand what we've got and, and see if they come, if you build it, will they come? I don't know.
All right. So, we're at the point where we need a motion to give staff direction. Do we want a motion to pursue this opportunity if it's grant-related? Or do we want a motion to pursue it regardless of a grant? Charlie?
I would move redirect staff to apply for a grant of 25 or whatever it may be, with the idea of expanding our public gardens for use for the public.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been motioned by Charlie, seconded by Shelley. Further conversation? Seeing no hands indicated in my right-hand column or on the screen. Let's call the question. Catherine, can you do a voice vote?
Davis?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Hershey?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Godis?
Yes.
Wilman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I think Deborah has her hand up, but I just have a quick question of clarification that I'd like to make based on Tony's no vote, is that motion was for we only go forward and do this if we are successful in the grant application. Is that correct, Charlie?
It was to apply for the grant, nothing more than apply for the grant.
Yes, we're applying for a grant. We're not committing to actually building anything. Is that correct? Okay. Was that your question, Deborah?
My question was, is if we do not get it, you can want us to stop?
Yes.
I think come back and talk to us.
There's no money. You guys are crazy. There is no money, but.
I, Tony, I agree, but I mean, I think if it isn't, let's talk, and it may well be there's no money, but let's not just do that tonight.
Okay.
I agree. Please, please bring it back.
To find out whether we get these grant funds or not, and if it's something you want us to do, we need to start now.
Right. And do I have the floor, Jonathan?
You do, Shelley. Sorry.
Deborah, that would be my take on it, is please apply for the grant and move forward with some of the planning. And, you know, just speaking for myself, I wouldn't mind seeing some small satellite gardens and, you know, at least a few locations in town, but we can discuss that later, too, as you move the planning forward along with applying for the grant. My take.
Can you bring us more detail in two weeks, Deborah, or Brian, whoever, to answer that question?
Yes, though I do like, I think if you guys would just, I don't know whether, and maybe you did tell me, and I'm just not listening. I'm, I'm hearing only maybe do some pre-planning, but don't spend any money unless we get someone else to pay for this.
Maybe.
Bring, bring it back.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Charlie's motion was to apply for the grant. That's the only thing that's on the table now. That's what, what we voted on six to one. We, you only have direction right now to apply for a grant. We don't, we did not make a motion to plan for, to do anything else, to make a reserve, nothing. We only took a vote on applying for a grant. If there's a second, not to shut comments down or anything, but if there's a second motion for people to say, continue to plan or to do whatever, but right now, the direction is just apply for the grant. Charlie, and then Shelley.
Just a quick question, Deborah. How long, some of these emergency grants, how long before we know about the grant?
I don't know, Charlie. Like, this is literally the first round, and I'm not, I'm not telling you we're gonna get it.
I understand, I understand.
Shelley?
I guess I would be willing to make a motion that in concert with applying for the grant, we move the planning forward on expanding the community gardens and exploring at least a couple of satellite locations in town.
You know, I would second that if we would take the conjunction out of the motion, so we have a clean motion. And that clean motion would be that we would move ahead with planning. And then I think if we wanted to have a second motion for satellite gardens, I think that that would be okay. But as I think about this, and as what Deborah has mentioned and the conversations, I think this would be a very positive thing for the community. I think it would give people something to do, give families something to do, and there could be some food benefit to it. But I would second the motion if we would say to staff, please go ahead with planning. And, you know, if part of it is considering other locations, I think that's fine, too. But I sort of favor the Wolfson plot, simply because it's pretty accessible and
Right.
the land's there to expand, and it seems to be kind of straightforward, but.
I'll admit my motion to say just move forward with.
Can I ask a question, Jonathan?
Tony, and then Paula.
Would, would this include, this planning cost anything? Again, I'm gonna vote no, because I think this is far-fetched. It's not gonna happen. Yes, Rick, it's something fun to do. Golf's fun to do. Pick-up ball's fun to do. Interesting to think about it. If you get the grant, then proceed. But I don't, looking to waste staff time and planning something that's not gonna happen. So, is the planning gonna start after you get the grant? Is Brian gonna start planning now? Because of basically the grant, it seems very confusing to me. But you guys obviously hold them in charity. Thank you.
Go ahead, Deborah.
I would just say, if it is something you're interested in us pursuing at the Wolfson, start planning for it, and I will need to spend some, because it is April. So.
You guys are playing with fire.
Okay. Paula, and then Steve.
My question was similar to Tony's. What is planning, and what is it involving, and what does it cost? And, you know, are we saying plan and put your shovel in the ground? Are we saying plan and do what Brian has done already, which is put together on a certain, I'm trying to get a think of what planning is and the cost of it, before we can move forward and say, yeah, let's do that, too. I want to know what we're talking about.
I would say, give me a tap, or I can either, you're telling me to wait until we get the grant and then go forward, or I think you're telling me, go ahead and start. There isn't this magical in-between world where we can figure it out without spending any money. Because it's April and planning season's mid-May.
All right. I'm getting a little bit of feedback and reverb, and I don't know if somebody who's not muted maybe has their speakers on loud or in an echoey room. Does anybody else have that reverb?
Yeah. And I muted to make sure it wasn't made, it's not.
Okay, so that, it's kind of, is, is it still going on? Oh, wow. Okay. I think it might have been, I don't know who. Steve Davis. So, I, so I'm gonna, go ahead, Steve.
I'm unmuted now. I don't know. Tell me if that, now it starts up again. I don't know. I don't quite understand. I, you know, I think that we have absolutely the most tremendous challenges of our lifetime in front of us. Those that we don't even know yet, that we're gonna surface in the next 30 days. And to spend staff time, I don't even know what planning means, but planning on gardening spots just seems like that is not of, of national importance here. If we can do something, you know, we can get a grant, and we can, in our spare time, find another, you know, piece of dirt somewhere that's not being, or never will plan on being used for anything else, then that's one thing. But I, this is, this, this whole idea is not defined at all, and I hate to spend staff's brain power working on that when they have absolute tremendous hurdles to get through in the next, the rest of this year. I don't get it. I can't support it. I can't support telling them to go spend time working on this deal. We're not gonna be in the gardening business. If people wanna, that's a hobby. You know, I understand it provides some food for some people that, that take that on as a hobby, but I can't put the, our government resources at that, and I certainly could never think that it was a good idea to go down to the confluence at the old sewer plant and start planting gardens. You would never have anything there but gardens. That's me.
Thanks, Steve. We're gonna have Brian Smith weigh in, then looks like Shelley, and then Charlie. So, Brian, you have the floor.
Staff presentation was over, Jonathan.
I think he has some additional information he might want to give based on our comments.
Question and public comment.
Well, Brian Smith is our staff.
I understand.
Okay.
Just asking for clarification when you're talking about planning, you know. Right now, we're talking quite a bit about the community garden idea, but we're looking at all kinds of different ways that we could possibly supplement food access, including partnering with these greenhouses or other communities for pulling together a co-op. I just want to understand if you do want us to continue any kind of planning effort around supplementing production. What, what is that encompass? Thanks, that's all.
All right. I'm still getting feedback, and my tech person thinks that it's all Steve Davis's fault. Did we still have the feedback problem now? It is all Steve Davis's fault. Thank you, Steve, for putting yourself on mute. Brian asked a clarifying question of us. Does anybody want to answer that or give some direction?
I had my hand raised, and it went away.
Oh, I'm sorry. Shelley, and then Charlie. I, I, that's my fault.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, I'd just like to say, I, I think, you know, the point was made that this is just a hobby, and it has nothing to do with helping people. I, I disagree completely. I think gardening and food production can be very productive on a small plot. People, people can learn and know what they're doing. And when we're looking at low-income and many people, a large segment of population being out of work for a long extended period of time, I think food production and food security and health for those people, the more we can do to help that, the better. And if we can educate people on, on small gardening and gardening at the, at the Wolfson Community Gardens, and possibly a couple of areas in town, we can discuss that later. The, the motion to move forward is, on the planning, is just to keep the idea moving forward in conjunction with applying for the grant, and it will take some planning and a little, some staff time. Hopefully, we would hear about the grant before we're actually putting shovels in the ground and moving it forward at that point. But I do think this can make a difference and help people, and I'd like to see it move forward.
Deborah, point of clarification, do you have, you're on mute, by the way, but do you have any suggestion on, or any idea of an approximate budget it would take, just dollars and cents, not staff time? Although I appreciate Steve Davis's point, but do you have any idea on dollars and cents of what it would take for, for planning?
No.
Okay.
But let us apply for the grant. But let us apply for the grants. We'll think about it some more. And, you know, maybe we can, you know, see if there's any donations anybody would like to do, any outside money we can get. You know.
Deposits.
And maybe we can.
And volunteers to help.
Okay, so we really need to move this along. I will, I have seen Charlie and I saw Rick's hand up, but it went away, but.
Did we have a motion in a second?
We do.
We do, but I just, we need to limit debate at this point because I think we've debated this point altogether and and we do have. I I after these two comments, I will call the question. And then if we want to have future debate or discussion, then we can have another one. Is that okay, Shelley?
Yep, that's that's good. I just wanted to see where we were.
Yeah, we always saw the motion in the second on the table and we'll reaffirm that after Charlie's question or comment.
I guess my my comment was to sit, it was, I would think a very minimum amount of time in a couple of weeks, Deborah and Brian come back to us and say, we think it might be these costs. And I understand the season where we are, but I would rather wait a couple of weeks and know what kind of staff time and or cost would be, and I would assume at a really low with a lot of little time, we could get that from staff in two weeks. So I would encourage, I'm not gonna move, but I would encourage we table this for two weeks.
Okay, so Charlie asked that we table this for two weeks. Parliamentarily, is that an alternative main motion, Charlie, or is that just a suggestion to? Is a suggestion to the main motion to Councilor Cop?
But we are going ahead with grant application.
Yes, that motion was taken in past six one.
It seems to me that the planning in conjunction with that would be mainly staff time and fairly minimal. But I guess I leave that up to Deborah and Brian.
Rick, you had a question or comment?
You know, I think we just need to up or down this thing. It's taken a long time. We've got a long way to fly. You know, my father started a community garden on Indian Reservation in fifty-five and it saved a lot of people's lives, but you know, I'm whatever you guys want to do. I mean, we have got about three or four big time items in front of us. And I really encourage us not to micromanage the staff, you know. Again, our duty is to set policy and let them figure out workload and where they can move with things. And if they're feeling like they could do that, fine, but other than that, I would say let's just call the question and get on with it.
Shelley, thank you for that, Rick. Shelley, do you have, can you repeat the motion again?
The motion was to, with the clarification from Rick, the motion was just to allow staff to continue planning on the community garden concept in conjunction with, you know, applying for the grant.
All right, let's call the question. Catherine?
Wilman?
No.
Godis?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Step?
Yes.
Hershey?
No. And you're wasting staff time. It's dangerous.
Coke? Yes. Davis?
He's muted.
You're muted, Steve.
I will abstain.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item. Item number twelve, HDR contract extension. Terry, need to unmute yourself bottom left.
Thank you. Good evening. This is another request for an extension to the HDR contract in relationship to the Twenty Seventh Street Bridge. And, you know, we are continuing a process with the contractor, RLW, to resolve two remaining issues, one related to the schedule and one related to an unforeseen condition on the on the bridge. And so with your approval, we would add fifty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-four cents to the HDR contract to help guide the city through ongoing negotiations with the contractor. Do you have any questions for me?
Terry, I have a quick question. Can you tell me who who's responsible for paying for this? Do we know that yet? Maybe that's a question for Carl also.
Let me just jump in. We don't, but we also, as you recall, in the exec session, we worked through possible scenarios. We talked about this being kind of an investment on that return we're trying to get. And that that it's gonna be, we need this piece of it because they have the records and the analysis to be able to to really look at, in particular, I think the schedule that is being developed. So that we understand what's going on there. You know, doesn't make me happy to spend more money, but I think this is a necessary expense right now.
I agree.
All right, is there any questions? Shelley?
I just asked it.
Sorry, I had to step out. My I apologize, everybody. My daughter was screaming because she spilled spaghetti sauce on her hand, so I apologize for missing the last thirty seconds. Charlie?
I would move for the approval of the contract extension, subject to our nonwaiving any claims that we may have against HDR arising out of this construction.
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Shelley. Is there any further discussion? Catherine, let's take a voice vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Paula, you had a question?
I, before we do the vote, I just want to bring back again what's really central to this to all of us right now is money. I understand that we do need to do what we need to do on this particular contract, but there are so many things that are gonna come up before us that I think we really have to be conscientious like Tony said earlier, on every dime we spend because looking at projections from other cities that I've seen and seeing what Steve Boyd sent us earlier, we may not have this money. And so clarity, when these things are presented to us on where this money comes from, is it, you know, part of a bonding thing? Is it money out of our A and I fund? Where are we getting this money from? I think all should be very clearly on the table so we know what we're spending as we move forward on these kind of votes. So I just want to put that on the table there. Money come from?
Yeah, I I think I can help a little bit is that the alternative would be to write a six-figure check in the middle to high six figures.
Thank you.
Counselor Hershey?
I just was requesting that you do and not a voice vote, but a roll call vote, not a vote by acclamation, please. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All right, Catherine, let's call the question.
Yes. Hershey?
No.
Godis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Step?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Wilman?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody. Item number thirteen, community support initiatives.
Yep. Hi, everybody. This is just a quick update on a couple of things that we're doing in town to try to help people the best that we can. We are working to see if we can get fees absorbed by the city that we currently push through to people that are paying their utility bills. Right now, it's, I think, a dollar seventy-five plus two and a quarter percent if somebody pays their utility bill online. We are trying to absorb those fees. We need a little bit of help from our, the vendor, the state uses to do that. Hopefully, we'll have an answer to that in the next couple of weeks here. We have not taken the step to waive utility bills at this point, water and electric and that kind of stuff. We're not gonna turn anybody off. You know, if somebody gets late, we're gonna work with them, but we are kind of delaying shut offs for right now. In the downtown area, Matt Langhorst was somehow able to fight through the red tape and twist the arm of waste management to decrease their number of visits every week. So we think that we're gonna be able to cut that bill for down, for the downtown area trash collection in about half. And assuming we're able to do that, we will push that cost savings through to to the residents and business owners down there. I have been part of a number of conversations the DDA has had recently, and those have been very thoughtful conversations about how they can kind of, you know, reengineer their budget this year a little bit, and they're coming up with somewhere in the general ballpark of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that they're gonna look to reinvest and and help businesses downtown in the DDA district get back on their feet as we start to recover. The city is gonna try to match that in some way for the the rest of the city. We may utilize some funds that we had for employee housing, for our lower paid staff. Deborah's gonna talk in a couple of minutes about some tourism and discretionary grant ideas that we may, that we may have. We've talked some about community gardens. I know that Jen has been working with Matt on the micro loan program that we've got available, and we're talking to some other communities and trying to leverage that the best that we can. So we'll try to keep you guys updated on the stuff that we're doing. In the meantime, if you run across citizens or residents or people that have requests for something, please send them my way. I'm trying to capture all the requests that we get. We are carefully considering all of those. We'll do everything that we can to to help everybody, you know, short of just handing out money or or, you know, waiving sales taxes and utilities.
You're gonna see a lot of no tonight.
All right, thank you, Steve. Any questions for staff? All right, seen none. This is a I guess an information item, so we don't need to open it to public comment, but if the public does want to comment, I will open it up. So go ahead. Anybody from public want to comment on this item? All right, seen no hands up. I will bring it back to council for further comments or or a motion.
Clarify what kind of motion we're doing, other than saying, continue forward, Steve. I mean, can you give me some more solid what what we're looking at here?
I don't think you need to make a motion. I think.
Okay. Disinformation.
These are the things we're thinking about.
Okay.
Go ahead, Shelley.
Sorry, Shelley. The only request that we have is, you know, we're trying to centralize those requests, so as those come up in the community and you hear from citizens about things they would like us to do or ideas they have, please send them my way. They can send me an email or call me or whatever. I'm easy to find.
And I I did have a question today, Stephen. I did forward them to you and Deborah. I don't know if you received an email yet, but it was from a small business owner, a retail shop. And he was curious if, since it's not an essential business, it's not classified as essential. Is he able to do, is it allowable for them to do kind of an online still retail type sales where they would take online or phone orders and pay over the phone and then package the the goods and leave them outside for pickup?
Yeah, we did get that. We have been working on that. Deborah and Carl are kind of going shoulder to shoulder with me, trying to help figure out the best solution to that. I think there are a couple of of, you know, different interpretations. If we can do that, we certainly will.
Great.
You know, if we find that it just is not consistent with our interpretation of the state stay-at-home order, then we may not be able to, but we'll have an answer tomorrow morning on that one.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Great. I saw another hand up. Paula, was that you?
Yeah, not this time.
Okay, sorry. All right. It seems like we are adequately updated. We don't need to have a motion, so thank you very much, Steve. Item number fourteen, FAB grants. I think, Steve, you're still up, maybe?
That's me.
Oh, Deborah, okay.
He can jump in if you have any technical questions. We have received, we left the Fab grant applications open. It is closed now. We did get applications. I was going to suggest that we open it back up and that we let people know that we have a great interest in ideas around economic resiliency and recovery. We keep it open for two weeks. We sort through them and then we bring you guys suggestions. You know, it's a different year than it was last year. And we may want to use those resources a little differently. But it was so close to the end of the application period that we didn't want to just cut it off, but.
Okay, Rick and then Paula and then Charlie.
Okay, so Deborah, we'd be talking about a two-week period and it would be sort of the request for proposal, if I can use that word, would be different. I would say, what can your organization, your nonprofit do to help increase economic return in the city of Glenwood?
Yeah, just like economic recovery ideas, do you have any? Because I mean, we we talk about it and we think about it a lot, but there are probably very good ideas out there that we will never get to unless we hear from people.
I like it. Thank you.
Paula and then Charlie.
But Deborah, do we, I know we probably don't because Steve already mentioned this earlier and as well as you, but I would assume that we're not going to see as much money to distribute. Are you getting a sense of that as well that what might have been two hundred thousand dollars, maybe closer to a hundred thousand dollars? Something along that line, or is that just, you just have no idea yet?
I would say we have no idea yet. We haven't even gotten tax returns from March yet, and we won't get those until towards the end of April. I mean, I think we are we're making assumptions that it's not going to be good.
Right.
Though there are some areas I think we were still gonna recommend that we invest in. And, you know, budgets are a weird thing in that we have the authority to, the money is budgeted. We do have reserves. Unless you guys tell us not to go forward with these Fab grants, I think we would recommend that we do, especially if we get some really good ideas about how to help businesses and people pick themselves back up.
Well, it's probably a separate conversation on whether or not we have to relook at our budget in another month or so, but I'll leave that till then. My other question on this, when we, and I think this is a great idea that you guys have, so I want to say that first, but will you still keep those other grants that you've received in consideration as we look at this, or is it one or the other?
No, I I think we look at it all, and we're just kind of giving people another opportunity to apply and say, we want your application. So would it be that everyone who probably has gotten money before, if people come up with really good new ideas, it may look different? But everything is still possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie and then Steve Davis.
Real real quick of this question, Steve Boyd, I don't see in my calendar, maybe I deleted it inadvertently. What is our next FAB meeting?
So our next regularly scheduled meeting will be the fourth Wednesday of April. I think we're gonna skip that one. All of our boards and commissions are kind of skipping the month of April and we'll get back together in May. I would say that I'm checking in with some of the Financial Advisory Board members. We may put together a Zoom meeting or something to kind of check in with everybody along the way, but we're expecting the next actual Fab meeting to be the fourth Wednesday of May.
So Deborah, I, and Steve, I think this is a great idea. I think we should reopen it for a couple of weeks. I guess, Steve, I would suggest if we do it two weeks, I would get us roughly this by seventeenth of April. There happens to be five Wednesdays in April. If we could have a FAB meeting the twenty-ninth, which is that last Wednesday in the month. And again, maybe only just to talk about the the grants and get, I would, I would like to get input from the community on on this idea. I think it's a phenomenal idea, and I think we need to look at how we're gonna do our grants this year because I do agree it's gonna be different than what we have in the past, but this is a good place to use the FAB and get some really good heads of that group.
Okay, yeah, that certainly makes sense. I'd like to check in with you and Paula and Deborah, you know, as the liaisons to Fab and and we can get on the same page there. I I certainly don't, am not opposed to plugging them in.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, a couple items. Tony Hershey dropped off and is working with Alyssa right now to rejoin the meeting. I think he's able to hear everything. He just texted me and and said that he's able to hear what's going on. I think he's able to hear everything. He just texted me and said that he's able to hear what's going on, but he's not able to participate. So if you don't see him up there, it's because he's working diligently to get back on to the meeting. And Steve Davis, you're up.
You know, I'm just extremely concerned about where we are, where we're going, what the world will look like in two weeks from now. I it seems like this whole Fab Grant program really should be looked at a month from now.
So Steve, is this a question or comments?
You mute.
If we have comments, maybe we'll save it after public comment, if that's okay. Give me a thumbs up, Steve. All right. Does anybody else have questions for staff? Okay, see none. I will open it to public comment. Is there any public comment on our Financial Advisory Board grants? And Tony's back with us. Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately for you guys.
Hi, Tony.
All right, now, Steve, I would love to hear your comments. Thank you for
So you didn't hear any of that?
I heard some of what Steve said. I was, I had to be promoted back as a panelist. I was thrown out.
My comments earlier didn't come through because I was muted, I guess. So I'll start over. You're asking for two weeks and you know, I have no idea what this world will look like in two weeks or even in 30 days. Seems like to me this whole entire grant process, even though you could go forward with asking for these other ideas, but it sure seems like to me we ought to wait till mid-May or the first of June before we start taking any further action on what our grant program, how that goes forward.
Thanks for that, Steve. Charlie.
Steve, I agree with you and when we act on it, but I don't see any reason we shouldn't put this out. And as I understand, we put it out for people to say, do you want economic assistance? And how would you see a grant for economic assistance? We we're not going to spend any money like this until we have a better sense of our budget. I 100% support you on that.
Tony.
Um, I couldn't agree more with Mr. Davis. I have no idea. I could never envision something like this. You know, all these groups are great. I, you know, I love you so, Paula. I love youth hockey. I love a lot of things. Unfortunately, these are things that we just can't afford right now. I think we need to put all of this on hold. I have no idea. Charlie mentioned spring break and this. I have no idea. Steve doesn't, Steve Boyd doesn't know either what our revenue is going to be like in six months and a year. If we, let's say this is cured quickly and we move along, but we enter into a national or a worldwide recession, a major recession. I don't like to use the D word, but that's possible too, and we have to be more careful. So I would, I would ask to put this on hold indefinitely until we know the situation. It can be revisited in June or July, and frankly, these organizations are just going to have to tighten their belt, just like a lot of Americans are having to do. Thank you.
All right, Rick.
And the D word is depression. I don't want to say that.
It could be S word for suppression, but I, you know, you're right. We don't know where we're at, but that doesn't mean that we would need to foreclose good ideas that are out there. I think cutting edge community is always out there trying to identify ideas and new approaches. And I agree, you know, we can't spend anything yet, but I wouldn't want to foreclose the idea that someone out there has an idea that none of us have ever thought of. And I think that that's the way it's coming to us is that let's go out and see if there are creative ideas. If there aren't any and we don't have the money, shut it down. If there are, and let's say there's some sort of entrepreneurial path that nobody's thought of that would actually increase the city's economic standing, then I think we ought to listen to it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other council comments?
I would make a motion, Jonathan, to postpone this indefinitely.
Indefinitely. Okay.
Well, until we can revisit it when we know what's going to happen.
I would second that motion if there was a little bit more specific timeline.
To June 1st?
I would second that.
Selectable. Thank you.
Any other further comments? There's a motion by Tony, a second by myself, Rick, and then Paula.
Yeah, just a quick check here. So does this mean if this motion passes that we're going to do nothing until June?
Yep.
I'm just checking it out.
That's what I would, that, I mean, I'd ask the second if that's what he thinks. I mean, not do nothing, but just wait and see what happens. We could certainly revisit it before June 1st if there's some sort of miracle.
Yeah, that's fine with me as well. Paula.
Um, and my question is really to Deborah, if we postpone this to June 1st, is there a way that we can announce to the public that the whole grant program is on hold right now and we will revisit what we want to do in June at a June meeting or something like that?
We would let all the grantees know and then probably do a press release.
Shelley.
I would just make a comment that I think I might be the only counselor that was actually on council during the great recession that came on. And we had similar situations, although I think this might, this will likely be much worse financially for the city. But it was not a time at that time to necessarily cut off support for the community. And to the extent that these grants are are in the budget, they're budgeted, we have the funding for that. I I would implore the council to, you know, we have other places where we can look at cutting budget. But to take monies away that can help businesses and help the community out there, help recover, help build resilience. I would, I would support at least moving the next grant cycle forward so that we can evaluate it. And maybe we have some language in there. If everything drops off the cliff and we actually absolutely can't fund the grants, then we don't, but I can't support this motion.
All right. Thank you, Shelley. Charlie, then Tony.
Yeah, I I'm not 100% where Shelley is on this, but I think we need to open this up, see what's there at the Financial Advisory Board at some point, look at it. I'm not willing to to vote to grant, make any grants until we have a better idea of the economy is, but just to say, we're not going to do anything for the next two months is is short sighted. So I'm going to oppose this motion.
Tony.
Jonathan, just to respond to Shelley, as a student of history, I recall the city of Glenwood Springs, although I believe I was in Aspen at the time during that great recession and the city failed, frankly, to tighten its belt. The city manager continued to keep the government big, which I didn't think was a good idea. And I think made some major errors that that didn't soften the blow of the recession may necessarily, but kept the government sort of going and spending at a high rate. This is going to be 10 times worse than this. You asked somebody like Christian Henry at the Hotel Colorado and other businessmen what he thinks the future holds and it, you know, June 1st is optimistic. I'm not saying, and I appreciate what Charlie's saying, but I'm not saying we're going to put all of this on hold. It's just everyone has to be prepared. And I don't think we're all grasping at this table, theoretical table, how serious this is. And I'm just not tonight or in the next few weeks or the next few months, you're going to see a lot of no votes from me because I'm not looking to spend more money on anything, not on beautification projects, not on grants that I don't know where they're going until we know that we are on a financial stable ground. Pretend, Shelley, that the entire income of the city has been cut off. That's what you almost have to think of. No more revenue. And I know it's not that serious, but you have to think like that because that's what could happen. And we have to be very careful to protect our citizens. And that means that some nonprofits have to tighten their belts too. So that's why I made that motion and I'd ask the mayor to call the question, please.
Appreciate those comments. Tony, Charlie, can you unmute yourself? I do have a question, a clarification on the comment you made, and then Shelley, I will get to your question.
I'm fine.
Okay. Charlie, you said you can't support this motion, but I heard you ask, you know, say, in general, I support this and I can't go forward with making it. What, what can't you support about this? And if you were to make an alternative motion, what would that look like? Is it? It, I'm just a little confused on your comment. I'm sorry.
Well, what I understood Deborah to say at the very beginning of this is we're looking to open this up to see if other people want to make applications for economic recovery kind of efforts and things like that. That's the kind of people we're trying to support. And we need to find out what that demand is before we can make a decision. What if any grants are going to happen? It may not be to youth hockey. It may not be to this organization, that organization. It might be to put money into a program to help the retail merchants recover. The DDA is looking at that, taking some of their money and putting it into that program. And until we can see what requests are, we can't make decisions. So my motion would be to let her, let, open up the grant process, have the D, the FBA look at this and then decide what we're going to do next from there. I'm not voting to spend any money tonight.
Paula.
Right. Um, on clarification, Charlie, on your proposal there would be open up the grant process, but delay decision on the grant because we do have a schedule for handing out those grants. So is there a way that we can move that till after June 1st for for the discussion?
Sure. I wouldn't oppose. I'm not saying we should prove any grants tonight, but we're going to have the FAB look at that, look at our economic structure and answer the questions we're all talking about. That's why we have that board.
Shelley.
I completely agree with with what Charlie just said. We're not voting on grants tonight. The grants come, actually come back to council for approval anyway, at the end of the process. So we'll have approval on it at that time.
Rick.
Yeah, I would say there'd be no real downside to this if we're going to allow people to sort of come up with creative ideas. We ought to listen to them and we don't have to spend any money. I mean, I agree that we're in a mess, but let's not, you know, stop the train to blow the whistle. I just think we ought to be listening to what people might come up with creatively. And they need to understand that there may be no money at the end of this either, but you know, I think we just owe it to our citizens to let them express their creativity.
Mr. Mayor, you know, Lyndon Johnson said, the art of politics is knowing how to count. So I will withdraw the motion.
Okay, so there is no current motion on the table. Does somebody else have a alternative motion currently? Charlie.
I would move that we allow Deborah's staff to reopen the grant application process for two weeks to refer the entire grant program to the FAB to consider grants in conjunction with the economic downturn and make a recommendation to the city how we should proceed, the councils, how we should proceed.
A second motion.
Been moved by Charlie, seconded by Shelley. Further questions or comments? All right, I do have a comment. You know, I have, I'm very split on this. Tony, I totally get what you're saying and Shelley, I understand that too. When I took over as executive director of the Early Childhood Network in early 2010, our organization and the whole economy was in the depths, at least locally, of a recession. And I was scraping to apply for every grant possible to keep our organization, our mission and our people employed. And the $3,000 that I got that year from the city of Glenwood Springs, it didn't make or break my budget. But it was, it was a good day when I got it. And so in that way, investing in the community and investing in the organizations that are local, especially if we're going to look at ideas on economic development or other things like that are, I think, important. That being said, I also remember the day in the fall of 2009, when I was with the city of Aspen and I got laid off. And I was one of the 16 people that got downsized in the last recession. And I remember bitterly several months after that, seeing the city of Aspen spend money on different things. And yes, their grant process and wondering why wasn't I valuable enough? And I just, I am, I just don't know how we go to a potential future where we might have to have some very difficult conversations about furloughs, about freezing pay, about, you know, things that are going to impact our staff. And I, I just have a hard, a really hard time being on both sides of those equations. But it was, I tell you, it was much harder to have that conversation as someone who got laid off from a city of Aspen job 11 years ago and the last time this happened. And so I always am going to fall on the side of conservatism in these conversations probably. And that, you know, I'm a product of my own history. So those are my comments for what they're worth. So if any, if there's no other comments, let's call the question. Catherine?
Willman?
Yes.
Godas?
No.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Step?
Yes.
Coke? Yes. Hershey?
No.
Davis?
Muted.
That was a yes. Is that a yes, Steve? Okay.
Is it a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right. All right, next item.
Mr. Mayor, may we, and I know that we've got a couple of hours. I just need to take, it's really, my restroom is real close. I'd like to just take a five minute. And I think we can give it to five. We got a lot of people. I don't want to keep them waiting, but I do need to take a brief, brief.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's reconvene at 7:45.
Thank you.
People are going to feel People are going to feel.
Jonathan, what's going on with that brief pause thing?
I don't know. Sorry. Uh, I think that that is the administrator, which is not me, that's Alyssa, who's doing a wonderful job.
So people would know that, that we were pausing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And by the way, thank you very much to our Alyssa and our IT team. And Catherine, I know this is not ideal, but you guys are doing fantastic. So we all really appreciate.
Thank you Alyssa for fixing my computer three times.
Um, I did have a comment. I'm able to see some comments as the moderator from the public that while the backgrounds are fun and interesting, they are slightly distracting. I don't know that uh, we should.
Well, this is America and I'm going to put up the flag. So if they don't like it, they shouldn't vote for me.
You know what? They're probably not even a citizen, Tony. So you know what? You bet.
Um, what I would say is that
French flag.
Is that um, because the camera is very specific relative to the background, when people lean forward and back, like Tony will disappear.
Like that?
Those are the things that I think people find distracting is sometimes that um, you fade in and out. It just is what it is.
But Carl, I don't think it's incumbent on me to have to show my private residence because I'm elected.
No, no, no. I was just, all I was saying was explaining what it was that people found distracting. That's all.
Well, then they should not, then they should.
All right. It looks like um, oh, sorry, Tony. Um, we have someone who has their hand up in the public. And I don't know if I've been monitoring that really well. Um.
Is Steve back?
I'm sorry? No, Steve is not back yet. Can I just ask the uh, person in the public, Greg Velazquez, if they had a comment on the recent item? Cause I don't know. We did take public comment. I'll just, I'll just ask them why their hands up. Sorry, guys. While waiting for Steve. Go ahead, Greg. You might need to unmute yourself. It's in the lower left-hand corner.
No comment.
Okay. If you want to un, raise your hand, that's fine. Uh, hey, thank you for participating, even if it's unwillingly. Okay, uh, let's bring this back to council. Steve Davis, are you here?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's go to item. I'm getting a little feedback that's thinking it might be me, the sorry?
There, we got everybody.
Okay. Item number 17. Or no, I'm sorry, item 15, critical construction during stay-at-home order.
All right, let me, uh, let me take that one on. Um, we, we drew straws for who got this one. I got short straw. Um, sorry, I was just like, nobody had smiled all night. And I know it's a serious time, but we're still all just goofy human beings. Um, so at the last meeting, we talked about the governor's order had just come out. There was trying to sort through without being rash about what critical construction meant. Whether all construction was permitted or not. Unfortunately, nobody who's really from the, the state has really provided a lot of clarification. But as we sat down and talked through it internally on, um, and I'm going to talk about, I'm going to take this in two pieces. One is infrastructure projects that we are doing. Um, or construction projects that, that kind of um, kind of classic, what you think of streets, sewers, whatever. Um, we're feeling like that if we um, require the contractors to provide a detailed plan about how they're going to meet the social distancing requirements of the governor's order. Keeping in mind that while it exempted construction and types of construction, it did not exempt them from the requirements of meeting all the other conditions of social distancing, six feet of separation, all the safety issues, all those kinds of things. And that, that, that requirement is different than say an OSHA requirement might be. Um, and, and while I respect the federal government, I'm not sure they've been the leading, cutting edge on this stuff so far. So, um, with that in mind, I think staff is comfortable with us. You know, moving forward with Cedar Crest and restarting Two Rivers. Um, Heil in particular has been great about providing, and I think Terry can speak to that. Um, a really um, detailed uh, plan for how they're going to deal with the situation under what are difficult circumstances. And obviously contractors are very concerned about their own, you know, their own folks' safety as well. Um, and this is really talking about just, you know, I'm not talking about the money side. I'm just talking about whether or not we feel comfortable that our people can be safe going out and doing inspections, which is a big part of this. Um, and whether or not, how they're going to meet those requirements. I would say that the, the condition of that is if we drive by your job site and you're not abiding by those rules, there is going to be a consequence, right? We haven't figured out exactly what that's going to look like. I, I think we're probably going to do some change orders related to liquidated damages based on violations. Um, because the most important thing is to keep people safe. Uh, as well as being able to keep this work moving forward. So that's infrastructure projects. Uh, on the building permit side, and I may have Jen jump in because um, she and the building official have been working very closely on parameters for how and when we will do inspections on construction to make sure there again, that our inspectors are safe when they go out and do these inspections. You know, there was some critical work being done out at the hospital. And my understanding is that they fully suited up the building inspector to enter the hospital with full PPE here. Um, so you know, we're trying to keep things moving forward, but we also have to be super cognate of the fact that we have a responsibility to the public and responsibility to our employees. So that's pretty much where we're at. I'm happy to answer any questions or have Terry or Jen jump in uh, with the details that I'm sure I glossed over.
Tony, you have a question? And then Rick.
Problem, come back to me.
Okay, Rick, and then Shelley.
And so Carl, this
Or can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah, I hope you can hear me too. I've got a little horse in my throat. Don't know what that's all about, but um, with the plan that we're talking about, uh, it's going to provide for social distancing. It's going to provide for safety. Uh, but does it also include, since this will fold into another discussion that we're going to have this evening about how people will get to the job site? Um, are we going to ask that there be no carpooling, for instance, and individual traffic? Are individual vehicles coming to the job site?
I think I'm going to let Terry maybe address that. I think Heil is a good example of how they have internal policies as well as, um, and I think that Gold Construction has a bring your own car to the job site policy as well.
Yeah, I'll jump in. Um, you know, Heil did give us their work guidelines, which um, does include a drive your own car to work if possible. Limit carpooling to two people per vehicle with a second passenger seated, uh, seated in the rear. Keep the same two people, um, carpooling, do not exchange passengers. And, and I'm reading directly from Heil's coronavirus work guidelines.
So we could require that of anybody that works for the city.
Yeah, I'm com- I'm comfortable that we can make that a condition of their, they're going to need to submit a coronavirus um, plan. Um, COVID-19 plan and you know, we're going to do our best to make sure that that plan accomplishes the goals of that social distancing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Shelley and Charlie.
Um, Carl and Terry, I just wanted to make sure there were uh, guidelines for construction that were posted on the Colorado State. Put out by the state. Uh, I'm not sure which department, if it was Department of Health or but those were very, very thorough. And so I'm just wondering if those will be used as guidelines for us.
Absolutely. And that's what we're expecting contractors to come to us with.
Great. Okay, thanks.
Uh, Charlie.
Yeah, I know at our meeting last week, uh, I think Jason Newman, if I remember his name correctly, a question about regular construction projects versus these big ones. As I understand it, Carl, what you were saying is that uh, we're going to allow construction to proceed and we were going to figure out how we're going to do our inspections. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's basically it. And there are categories of inspections we may not be willing to do because um, we just can't safely do it. Um, and, and there again, it is, um, I can have Jen talk about the guidelines that they've been developing, but at the end of the day, there are going to be times when, you know, it just doesn't work, right? Um, and, and I think that there are areas of construction that are very difficult. And going to Shelley's point on the, the guy, the health guidelines. Is that, you know, if it requires two people to be holding that sheet of plywood up or, or drywall up and they're two feet apart, you're kind of missing the point of the social distancing guidelines.
And, and this is something that the contractors, uh, you say at a house project, they're doing a remodel on a house. They would know that we wouldn't go do inspections and then may bring them to a hall to get.
Yeah. And I think we're trying to be really clear in our communications on the website. Um, and Victor is great about communicating that information. You know, directly to contractors. Uh, he's, he's making a Herculean effort to figure out ways to allow this to work. Um, I'm just, I guess I'm just acknowledging that we may run into some situations where it doesn't.
And we will be covered legally if we say, do you get any further this project because we can't do the inspection?
Yeah, I'm pretty comfortable defending on a, a public health and safety grounds.
Thanks.
Paula.
I'm still trying to get some clarity on, on, we're talking about city construction projects, but it obviously influences private construction projects. And if we do one thing for the city, then we also have to allow private construction companies the same kind of leeway that we're offering people working for us. Am I getting this all straight?
Yeah, well, let me tell you, they're, they're generally kind of two very different types of projects. Um, the kinds of projects that the city typically pays for and undertakes are rebuilding a street, laying new sewer pipes, electric, those kinds of things. Um, kind of larger infrastructure, you think Cedar Crest, think Two Rivers Park. Um, inside the limits, city limits of Glenwood, we're primarily the only ones that are doing those kinds of projects. And um, so when somebody is working for us, or if they were doing a smaller project, if they were doing um, more of a traditional building project, we are going to require that they have a, a COVID-19 plan. Um, the other category is out there in private construction. Really, our biggest oversight in Glenwood is building inspections. Um, and when we will inspect and underneath what conditions, um, you know, we're trying to do, because those building permit inspections are very different than say Terry going out and doing a trench inspection on a city utility project, right? So that's that second category I was talking about where Victor is our building official. Um, you know, he tries to do as many things remotely, have him walk with a camera, identify if there's issues, decide whether he needs to be there live and in person or not, to try to both protect them and protect uh, him and his inspectors.
So, so I understand that all from city safety. Um, I'm still concerned that, you know, how does this all comply with the governor's order of, you know, stay in place, stay in shelter and we're not.
Right. So construction was, construction was identified as, as a critical business. And just when, right, so let me run through. Um, that's generally being interpreted as any construction can be going on as long as it complies with the social distancing. And that, that seems to be what the general consensus in the state is coalescing around is that even though it's badly worded, it means any kind of construction, as long as they are complying with the social distancing guidelines. There are some jurisdictions that have uh, more significantly curtailed it. Uh, Pittkin County, Laramore County, Gunnison County, San Miguel County. All basically have shut down everything except emergency repairs and critical infrastructure projects. So they've gone beyond where the governor's order is right now relating to all types of construction. So really, I think at this point, um, you know, I think staff is okay with where we're at underneath the governor's order and is not recommending additional measures. Um, that could change over the next week or two weeks, depending on the numbers that we see and the risk factor that we feel is involved.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right. See none. I will open this up to public comment. I see we have a couple of contractors in the crowd. Uh, if you're able to either raise your hand or do star nine if you're just calling in. Okay. See no public comment. I will bring it back to council for uh, further discussion and/or motion. Shelley.
I feel like um, we have evaluated this. I, I agreed at our last meeting that it was prudent to put the Two Rivers Park project on hold. And um, to delay the start of the Cedar Crest. But I, I do feel like based on the information, especially that I saw come out from the state yesterday and the the fact that contractors, I think, have had time to put these a lot of thought into the safety protocols and what's needed to do the social distancing. So I would like to make a motion if I can, just to kick off the conversation with council. And I would move that the city move forward with the Cedar Crest infrastructure project and continue the completion of the Two Rivers Park project. Provided the contractors have a valid uh, COVID-19 safety plan in place and that it's adhered to. And also that the building department continue to work with the construction industry to safely allow projects to proceed. Based on their
I would second that, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by Shelley, seconded by Tony. It looks like Matt Langhorst has additional information that he would like to add. And you're muted, Matt, so there you go.
Uh, I just wanted to bring up, because I missed the last, the first part of the last council meeting, but I want to make sure that we're um, including the waterline installation project so that Joe Mueller knows that he's also allowed to move forward with his project. Um, he's already submitted a nine-page uh, COVID, COVID-19 plan to the city that he'll be working under that is extremely thorough. And as far as I can see, um, follows all of the new state guidelines that are being put out there also. Just wanted to make sure that was included in the conversation.
So is that the only other project, Matt, to include at this point?
Um, we are working on a couple of small things as the city, you know, we're trying to button up the substation pad. Um, but we are also abiding by our SOPs, which are COVID-19 compliant uh, to complete that. And, and council has let us continue filling potholes um, and doing street sweeping at this point with separation between the employees as we've been doing for the last two, almost three weeks now.
Okay, so I would amend my motion to include the water, the water distribution lining.
And that is, I'm, I'm sorry, Shelley, I would second that or re-second that or approve that second.
Deborah, you had a comment?
I was just going to ask if we could make it more general and not project-specific, like just are you guys, because you voted at the last meeting. So you have to vote in this one, but just letting us go forward with city infrastructure projects if we consider them critical and important and we have a COVID-19 plan that we believe is acceptable, rather than having us come back for each individual project.
Yeah, I'm just hesitant at this point, Deborah, because we don't know what type of budget impacts we're going to be going forward with. So we, we might have to look at cutting projects. So I would prefer to to have major projects come back to us before we approve them to go forward.
Shelley, what's major?
I don't know, at this point, honestly.
Okay, we have a lot of hands up. Uh, Terry Perch.
You know, I, I know of two things that are kind of, we would consider them kind of minor, but um, you know, they may, um, they not, may cause some community or council concern. they may cause some community or council concern. You know, we have yet to finish the landscaping at the 27th Street roundabout and some of the landscaping is important to keep water from moving, you know, dirt from moving into the river. And it's one of our ways of sealing the surface and keeping us in conformance with our CDPHE permit. The other project that I know, I think you guys will be concerned about is the the completion of the Six and Laurel Roundabout. You know, we have, we placed our trees, we've placed our rocks, but they're scheduled to be more greenery that goes in, shrubs and flowers.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I still agree with Shelley that these major projects.
Charlie.
I guess my question is, Shelley, are you considering within your motion, are we allowing private construction or are you not including or discluding? It's not a word, excluding.
The second part of my motion included, and maybe we want to split it up, I'll kind of leave that to Carl, but the second part of my motion included allowing the building department to continue to work with the construction industry to safely allow projects to move forward.
I missed that, thank you. That answers my question.
And, you know, I guess I'd like to hear some discussion on council. I might be willing to amend that motion to open it up to other projects, but I'd like to hear some council discussion on that.
Tony, you had your hand up before and I cut you off, so I apologize.
Sorry, I just was going to say that I agree with Shelley, or at least Shelley five minutes ago. So if this motion is amended, I would draw my second. I think she's absolutely correct. I'm not particularly interested in what happens at a roundabout at Sixth Street now. We have other more important things. So if anything major is coming back, it has to come through us. I appreciate what the city manager is saying, but I think we were pretty specific on those projects. And that's my second was to that motion. Thank you.
Okay, Paula, then Steve Davis, then Charlie.
Um, I can't support this. And really, the reason I can't support it is our governors asked us to stay in place and stay in shelter until April 11th, which is only a week or so away. And I have a hard time going person by person and telling people how important this is and what this says to me if we say, okay, move forward with two projects or three projects or five projects or all construction. We're telling our citizens that there's a lot of leeway here and there's not leeway. This is a really dangerous time. And we don't know where our numbers are going to be next week. And I just am not comfortable saying, oh, it's okay if you sit in the backseat and you drive with me over to the construction site. Or it's okay if, you know, you're over there flagging and I'm over here digging, oh, you can come over here and give me a hand here a second. I just feel like we're at a point right now that we don't, we're in a really dangerous spot. And I'm not ready to move forward right now and go, okay, the door is open all of a sudden because we have a lot of things lined up. I realize this puts us in stasis. I realize, but it's only another week or so. And I think what we've been asked is to hold on, stay in your home, take care of each other in your homes. You know, we're saying you can't go play tennis, but it's okay if you work side by side putting and piping, you know, I just, the discrepancy here just doesn't get to me. And I realize the economic factor involved. But I think we're heading uphill in numbers right now and I'm just not ready to open that door with my conscience of putting people in danger.
And by the way, Paula, it's four weeks now. The governor has changed that to April 30th, including schools. So there's a shutdown in the state until April 30th, not April 11th.
Has he extended the stay at home until April 30?
There's a.
I did not see that. I only saw till April 11th to stay at home. I did see the schools till the 30th.
Okay, fair enough.
All right. Steve, you were next, but we have staff that probably has some pertinent comments. So I'm going to go Deborah and then Matthew and then Steve Davis, and I apologize, Councilor Davis.
I was just going to say, if you guys do want to make it so large, you know, spending decisions that are budgeted that are under $100,000 come back to you, you don't have to give me that direction tonight, but you need to give me that direction at some point because that is not how things are set up now. And I think you can tell me that. But I need to hear it.
I'm going to jump in and make a comment on that comment and say that we entrust our staff to be guardians of the budget to a certain point. And I don't want to micromanage. And I think there's no one more vested than the staff is than to make these decisions. I think if we start to feel that our staff is getting way out in front and then completely spending frivolously, which they have not demonstrated at all in any way, shape or form, that I think we can readdress it, but I don't want, I think the emergency powers that we granted Deborah specifically a month ago kind of fly in the face of then asking that we have every small item come back to us. And so I would like to, and I know this is an emotion, but if it was a motion, my vote would be to continue to allow staff to make decisions within their spending, current spending authority and their emergency authority as well.
And I'm okay with that. If that is, if it's under 100,000, I guess I consider that more as a city project, that's more of a minor level of project. So I would be okay with amending the motion for that. I have a feeling that some of the landscape completion might be more than that, though, so we'll see.
Yeah, the landscape on the 20, without having the numbers right in front of me, I think that landscaping at 27th Street is more than 100,000.
Okay.
Yeah. Matt Langhorst.
I wanted to bring up that we've gotten several of these COVID plans in, and I think that staff needs to sit down and look at all of them, combine them together, because, you know, hopefully Hall doesn't take this inappropriate. I don't think that even the carpooling option is an option. If you're going to bring your employees in, they need to be in separate vehicles. We will provide a place for them to park within the staging areas and that they need to be separated as the governor is asking for. And if it makes council feel more comfortable, I think that some of these projects, maybe not Two Rivers, Terry can comment on that one. You know, we could wait till the 13th to start on them. So that we're after the stay at home order. If the governor extends the stay at home order, then we'll probably have to have a secondary conversation that we probably need to start. Like the waterline installation project itself, we are actually not abiding by state law because of the water lines we currently have. So that is kind of a critical infrastructure project that we've been putting off. You know, Cedar Crest is a critical infrastructure project. I wouldn't ask the city to spend $4 million on a project that is not critical. I mean, I can't guarantee I can provide fire flow to the top of that facility up there. So I understand Paula's point that are we moving forward with things that are, we're asking other people not to? I think it's a case by case discussion, which is why I think Shelley, making these very specific is the appropriate thing to do. And if we have projects that we feel are critical or can be confined to a very small location, but yet still keeping people separated is the correct way to go with the conversation. You know, for Cedar Crest, an example, you know, residents are not going to be allowed to come out and have conversations with the contractors, which they sometimes like to do. There will be a liaison that if you want to talk to them as a resident or have a comment or a concern, you have to speak to this human being, you have to speak to them on the phone or via email. And if they need to be a face to face, it will be outside and you will be more, well more than six feet apart from that human being to have a conversation. So I think construction wise, they are outside, it's not confined like going to the hospital where you're in a room with somebody and that room may only be six foot by six foot. So you're not going to get six via separation from them. Where you have to full PPE up to make sure that Victor and our inspectors are safe. So I guess I'm not pushing, but at the same time, it's like these are infrastructure projects. They are critical. And at some point, this is going to subside. I don't want to make it any worse, obviously, by putting people in the same car with each other or confining them in a space together. That's why we have trailer etiquette. Safety procedures for safety meetings in the morning, all of these things have been put together in basically three really good plans that we've got. And I think staff needs to take all three plans and say, these are the best pieces of each one of these things. You guys are now going to abide by the the plan that's being agreed to by staff and yourselves to be able to move forward with these projects. So but case by case, I think is definitely the way to go. And I'm sorry, I'm looking because you're all on my screen in different places. I feel that is definitely the way to go with the conversation. And other things that we haven't really discussed and thought about is we have design projects going on. Is it okay if a surveyor needs to go out for a part of a day to go shoot something? Is it okay for them to do that? Because like South Midland, we'll probably have to go stake something for somebody to look at something. Is it okay for that surveyor to go out and put six stakes in the ground so that Ryan or Terry can go look at something or be on the phone and have a conversation with somebody about, hey, this is where the right of way is and this is why we're having this discussion. So I want to make sure that that's kind of folded into this conversation a little bit is what is okay and what is not? I think critical infrastructure projects, because I have a whole ton of other projects I want to do. I'm not asking for those to be done. I just, there's two of them at this point, which I consider critical outside and controllable. So hopefully you guys are okay with that. That's my spiel.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Steve and then Shelley, and then I think we're going to call the question.
I don't even know what the question is at this point, so hopefully we read that again. You know, I have complete confidence in this staff to make these decisions. I don't think that we as council should be in a position to have them bring us each and every project back. I do think that you know, everybody and certainly this staff is completely aware of the social distancing orders and the necessity of that. I would have absolutely no interest in having contractors without a plan in place, an acceptable plan in place continuing to work. I think if they do, such that I've seen from Gould Construction, probably, you know, Newman Construction as well. And they're working outdoors. And our staff is comfortable with that plan, then I think they should be able to continue to work on these projects. I think that Two Rivers Park needs to be finished. I think these projects that are under contract and ongoing should be finished, but we should make damn sure that all the protocol is in place. It does not work to put carpooling together of any kind. If you can't figure out how to get to work, then don't come to work. You can't ride in the backseat of a car and and still be, have the distance from this thing that you should have. Down here, if you are riding around a car with people other than who you reside with, you'll get pulled over by the local authorities. Sometimes it's just obvious, you know, when you see it. That doesn't work. So like I say, I'm not sure what the motion on the table is, so that for me. But I think we certainly ought to rely on our staff to make these decisions to go forward.
All right. Rick, I haven't heard from Rick and I'll call on Rick, but I think we're about ready to call the question. Shelley, do you have something quick as well? But I'll head Rick first.
Just a quick one.
Yeah, I'm going to vote to support this, but I'm just curious whether we have a whether we have a set of off ramps here. I mean, if there's clear violations, I know Carl, you sort of mentioned this in your presentation, but would it come to a point where we shut the project down if there were continued violations of social distancing? If there was something that we saw that was just plain not upholding the plan that was there, are we prepared to do that?
Yeah, I think we are. And I think that's, I think Matt really spoke eloquently to the, you know, there are just some things that don't work in a plan. There are some things you can see that don't work. And I do think that the hard part for staff is that it's incumbent on us that, you know, we're going to have to make that call when we see it.
Well, and I think the council would back you up if you had to make that call. I mean, I imagine anybody voting for this wouldn't back you up, so.
Right. Yeah, no, and I mean, just because, you know, we're going to do what we have to do, but we're trying to, you know, we're trying to find that path, just like everybody is.
Thank you.
All right, Shelley, real quick.
Okay, I just was going to reiterate on that. I want to be very clear that beyond just having the COVID-19 plan in place, if any of our staff, engineers, inspectors, public works, people go out on site to work on a project or do an inspection, if they see things that are not complying with the plan, I want them to have the authority to take those repercussions and whether it's a warning or shutting them down or what that will be, I'll leave that up to Carl and staff, but I want them to feel like they have that full empowerment to do that.
Amen.
For safety. So to restate the motion, it was to move that the city move forward with the Cedar Crest Infrastructure Project, the Two Rivers Park Completion Project and the waterline, waterline lining project, I believe. Assuming those projects all have a valid COVID-19 safety plan in place. And also that we allow the building department to continue to work with the construction industry to safely allow projects to proceed.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the question I had, and I thought we had included that to allow staff and Project Center 1,000 to go forward too.
Under 100,000, thank you, Charlie. I meant to.
I think Tony had indicated by a thumbs up that he had agreed to amend his second of that original, of those changes, so.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, so we have the, if everybody, does everybody understand the motion? Just give me a thumbs up. All right. Steve, I don't care. Somebody who dresses like that, I would definitely understand how you. All right, let's call the questions. All those, I'm sorry, Kat, let's do a real call vote.
No. Davis?
No.
Hershey?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Wilman?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and this is a point of interest. Steve has given you a little bit of a ribbing, but you did have your hand raised. I didn't see it until after I had called the vote. And do you have something that you needed a clarification at all? No.
Doesn't mean I get to revote if I.
Well, I guess I'm surprised a little bit. So is there something that you have?
No, I, you know, just, it was just, I don't know if I needed clarification. The reason I voted no, can I say that?
Yes.
Is because staff ought to be charged with bringing every single thing along to council. And that's why I voted no on this. And I think we need to have a continued conversation about how we continue with any other private construction in this city while the shelter in place and stay at home order is in place. I don't know, we'll do that.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Let's move on to the next item. Vacation rules, item number 16, vacation rental sensation during stay at home order.
Yeah, let me, let me address this one. So and I know Tony is struggling with some bandwidth issues. So I'll try to be quick. So it was raised whether or not like VRBO should be, you know, stopped during this time period and I have to. so it was raised whether or not like VRBOs should be, you know, stopped during this time period. And I, and I have to tell you that, um, so underneath the governor's order, um, lodging is considered a critical business that can stay open. So you guys would go and be going beyond the governor's order. Um, again, those counties, uh, in areas that I know have done that, uh, San Miguel, Gunnison, Pittkin and Summit Counties. But they have, um, they have shut down all short-term lodging, which includes hotels, motels, VRBOs, Airbnbs. I will tell you, um, from my perspective legally, I can't differentiate and I don't have the facts to differentiate why a VRBO, would be different than a hotel. Yeah, from a, from a public health standpoint, and because we don't have a public health department, we don't really have a way to necessarily do that. Um, so I really think it's a, it's kind of a binary conversation we would be having on it is either close everything or you close nothing. Um, because I think trying to pick out a particular segment might not make a ton of sense. Um, I do know that there's been some conversation about the fact that most people just don't have any bookings going on anyway. The exception, if you were inclined to close them all down, I think, um, would be, um, what the, all those counties have done, which is if it is providing, uh, essential or critical worker housing, uh, if it needs to be used or utilized for emergency health purposes, um, you know, set up, uh, corps of engineers coming in and setting up hotels as negative pressure, um, facilities to aid, um, in, in increasing bed counts. Those would be the areas that I don't think you should completely ban if you were considering, not allowing any of these, uh, facilities to operate, um, inside of Glenwood Springs.
Thanks, Carl. Shelley.
Just a question, Carl. On another thing, we do have some smaller hotels, motels in town where that provide, long-term housing for people. Is there a way that we could exempt that?
Yeah, a- absolutely. And I mean, I think one of the things is if it, if it is your permanent right, and I, I should, I was thinking of saying that it's kind of that third category is if it's providing permanent housing to somebody. Um, it's not short-term housing. It is actually long-term housing. And if they're paying by, the night, most of those facilities would have 30-day or more agreements with those folks. Um, because you don't want to have to pay the bed tax or the lodging tax. Um, so it's really, it's like I said, it's kind of, you know, essential personnel housing. If it's your regular housing or if it's needed for medical, um, services, those would be the three categories. Um, I, I, I think at this point with the stay in place order going on in Colorado, I don't know, um, if we were ahead of that stay in place order, I think it would have more value than it does because we're behind that. Nobody really should be moving around in Colorado at all. There's kind of a big sign on the state line. You know, at least sort of it, it feels that way of like, don't come. And if you come, keep moving. Um, that's kind of the messaging right now. So I, I, I don't know if it's something that you guys need to take up, but it's your call.
Uh, I'd love to hear from Tony Hershey on this. Tony.
Can you guys hear me? Okay.
We can hear you great. We just can't see you well.
Well, that's good. Uh, my concern, Carl, and I appreciate what you've said, is these out of state visitors. I mean, some of this evidence is anecdotal, but I, I told Shelley about a VRBO on 12th and Blake, where this couple and their family came from California. Are they running from COVID in Los Angeles or, or San Francisco? I don't know. But those are the kind of concerns I have that this could overload our infrastructure. Carl mentioned from a woman and her husband who rents some VRBOs downtown, and they're renting them to nurses and doctors who have come here, you know, to provide critical services. So it is a, it is a problem, but what I, what I don't want is, to go back to Paula's point about the governor. I mean, people shouldn't be traveling here. The governor of Utah made it clear that he didn't want people visiting Moab, Moab and the national parks because their infrastructure would be overloaded if they got sick. The reason our governor banned skiing and shut down the ski areas and stuff is because, and I think you guys read that article that Deborah sent about, um, Ketchum and Sun Valley in Idaho is because, our small hospital could not survive, um, a large influx of COVID, patients. And if you have large groups of people coming here, and I don't blame them, I'd get out of New York City if I could, and they will come to Glenwood and get sick or bring the illness here. Those are the combinations of things, that they had. But like I said in the newspaper this morning, I want to have this discussion because I think it's important. But Carl makes an excellent point about distinguishing between, say, you know, La Quinta and, my neighbor who rents out as a VRBO. Thank you.
All right, Rick.
So, you know, I should know the answer to this, but I don't. Um, we license, uh, VRBOs. Do we also license hotels?
We don't, but that doesn't, I mean, uh, they would have a, a development permit of some sort. Um, the, uh, looks like everybody's getting a pet. I, I feel remiss. I don't have a pet, uh, with me. Um, I think for me, you have the authority, to regulate both in this context. So I think the licensing isn't, um, doesn't have any bearing on the, the question you need to ask, or the decision you need to make rather.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Uh, seeing other questions for staff. We will open this up to public comment. We have 24 people in attendance in the public. Is there any comments? Okay. Uh, I'll just pass along a comment that I heard today real quickly. Um, and it, it reflects, and I think it's, uh, pretty consistent with what we're talking about by two comments about, uh, critical care, uh, workers. In this case, actually two people called and said they had nurses that had come from out of the area, who were staying at their, uh, residence. One from Steven Burgeney, who, um, dramatically dropped the rate of his short-term mental to accommodate that. And I think that's what we're talking about here. So, um, I think that covers it by this. Uh, I told him I would pass that information along. So, uh, Steve Davis. Unmute yourself.
Got it. Yeah, it, you know, everybody's business is affected. Uh, certainly, I'm another one of those, but we are, uh, a stay at home order. And, uh, it makes absolutely no sense to me, why we would be providing short-term rentals, the people that are obviously, for the most part, trying to escape where they are to get to a better place. Certainly, all of that has been shut down here. I think it's a thousand dollar fine if you're caught in a short-term rental. So, yeah, I, I can see no excuse for, for doing that at this point in time. And I think that we should immediately suspend it. And I think that we should, uh, review it when the, um, stay in place order is, is, um, is, um, lifted, you know, at that time.
Thank you, Steve. Rick and then Charlie.
Yeah, I, uh, you know, I agree that people are really affected by this economically. Um, I do think though, uh, there's a role for common sense. As I said in the paper today, you know, at some point, and I've gotten several emails from VRBO owners who say, well, all of our, uh, folks who are going to come here have canceled because they don't want to come to Glenwood because everything's shut down. You know, and I think that that's fine and dandy. And, uh, you know, I believe in self-regulation and I'd, I'd like to leave it at that. But, um, there's always, you know, one or two loopholes out there and one or two of those loopholes could be the loophole that's, turns into a noose around our necks. Uh, so I'm going to, you know, agree with what Steve said. Um, I don't know, why we should allow it. You know, I'm not even sure that we should allow hotels, uh, to, let people who are from out of state or who have no legitimate business in Glenwood, uh, to visit. Um, because it is a pandemic. Uh, I think we're going to see that line go straight up, uh, here in Garfield County. Uh, we're going to see it go up in Glenwood. And I would rather err on the side of, uh, being very conservative about this. I'm also concerned that, you know, the governor's order is only until, the 11th. And I don't think that we can center on that. I think that, um, as developments happen, uh, that we'll see that line extended, and extended again some more. So, now I realize it's an economic hit and I think we've got good citizens running our VRBOs. I'm just, you know, worried about the one or two clinkers that are out there that maybe we can do something about.
All right. Thank you, Rick. Before, and then I just want to give everybody a, a little bit of, uh, grace as we're doing this new technology. I did open this up to public comment. There was, on the last item, there was a hand that came up after we closed public comment. And, and I didn't get to it because we'd closed public comment, but I do want to be able to give the public enough opportunity to comment. So I know this is, is unorthodox, but, I see a hand up and I would like to recognize the person in the public, if it's possible to, um, give a brief comment before we continue our public comments. Is that okay with everybody on council? Just give me a thumbs up or down.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Alicia, you're going to need to go to your bottom left hand corner and unmute yourself if you want to comment.
Good evening. Um, my name is Alicia Frederick. I am a vacation rental owner in downtown Glenwood Springs, and I appreciate this discussion happening, but I do want to bring, um, up for the staff to, or I'm sorry, for board to consider. Um, the first is not to make assumptions about everyone coming to this town and needing a place to stay. I think many of us have family members that may possibly be trying to separate themselves. I think we have, um, a lot of different, uh, options other than just people trying to escape a city and you see tags that are different than yours. And we have to be very careful about that. The second thing I would ask is how would this be policed? Um, how are we making sure that people are coming from out of town and escaping? How are we, um, keeping track of people that are renting their homes to people outside of the area instead of people in the area that need them? The other thing that I want to bring to point with this is that this is also a place for some creativity here. We have an opportunity to open our homes up to those critical healthcare needs. Uh, I'm sorry, people that need places to live, and coming to our areas. And why not try and help connect us to the, to the health community where we can try and, keep the economy alive, still be a part of Glenwood's tax revenue, um, contributors while we can and figure something like that out. Um, the lastly, uh, I think we do have to remember that self-regulation is very, uh, apparent here. It's happening. Our, uh, I have very few rentals on the market, uh, dates on the, my calendar right now. Uh, I have one for May, and that's a future appointment, somebody hoping that we'll be able to come and stay in our town. Um, but we don't want to put anybody in danger either. Uh, we have measures in place to make sure that our homes are clean, safe, and it's safer than a hotel at this point. Um, you can definitely social distance with your family in a home, in a motel. You have to move and get out and you will be in contact with other people. So just some things to consider, um, as you continue your discussion.
Alicia, Alicia, real quick, before you timeout, can you just give your full name and address, um, as just for public comment?
Mailing address or physical?
Physical and, and full name, please, for the record.
My name is Alicia Frederick. Physical address is 740 Bennett Avenue, Glenwood Springs, Colorado.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, I'll bring it, uh, back to council comments. Um, thank you everybody for, uh, indulging us for that. Uh, Tony and then Charlie.
And then Charlie, I don't want to supersede you, but I would, I appreciate what Alicia said, but, you know, I can't, I agree with Rick 110%. I can't trust people to regulate. I've gotten a lot of contacts from, VRBOs like Annie who lives on Cooper, who you know, Jonathan. I, I would like to make a motion to shut down these, but I would like to make an exception, for critical workers. I don't want to kick people out of, you know, if they're, if they're using hotels for work or if they're critical workers, I am concerned and I'm sure people are self-regulating. But I see an out of state tag, frankly, Jonathan, from California, and we, this town cannot survive. That hospital in Ketchum shut down. It scared me to death. That article in the Washington Post scared me to death. If, if 20 or 30 people come here and they get 30 or 40 people sick, and what Rick said, about the line going up, we don't know. We can readdress this in a few weeks. If God, God willing, this problem, solves itself and we're all healthy and there isn't this increase, but we cannot afford, members of this council, we cannot afford to, to overload our infrastructure. It's not safe and I can't, count on people, you know, sometimes people are greedy. Sometimes people just don't think, you know, you think of those spring breakers in Florida and making dumb decisions. People do stupid things. It's our job to keep the people of Glenwood Springs safe. Not the people of Denver, not the people of New York, not the people of California or Arizona, the people of Glenwood Springs. So I would make a motion, and I don't know how Carl would word this, so I would defer to him, but to, to close these VRBOs at this time, with the exception for critical health workers or other critical workers who need these places to stay. Thank you.
Can I, can I clarify, Tony? Um, because I think when I mentioned it earlier, are you, you're talking about all short-term rentals, including hotels and motels, correct?
I guess that I am, yes, because I don't know how you distinguish.
Um, so I, I think what you're, you, maybe, uh, if I may on the motion is it, um, uh, to, and I'm going to just pick a date random, not randomly, but just, um, thinking my way through it, um, to close all, um, short-term rentals, uh, for a period, uh, of 30 days. Um, exceptions for, um, critical services, employees for the medical industry, um, family members, and if it is your permanent residence. Does that make sense?
Yes, just like Aspen did, Carl.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Can I make a, uh, a suggestion, Tony, to your motion? And well, maybe it's Carl's. At this point.
Well, my Carl is my motion.
Uh, Carly said 30 days can, i- i- if, if that is the motion, then this could expire before our, our first meeting in May. Can we have the motion just for, uh?
Yeah, that makes sense. I was just trying to think my way through what the best date was. The meeting.
Is it okay? So we don't have to call a special meeting?
Yeah.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second to motion.
Thank you.
Have been moved by Tony, second by Shelley. Further comments, Charlie then Paula.
Carl, the clarification or Tony, both, um, you, you did use the word that's found in the, the, uh, health 24. I forgot what the health directive is. It's Department of Health.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, thank you. Twenty-four, ten, whatever. Sorry, I've got a good number. I think we should call them essential workers.
Okay, um, essential workers for the medical industry.
Right. And for residents of Garfield County, um, I would like to make sure they're included in that. The reason would be is we just a little while ago talked about construction, people, and if some of those construction people can't drive separately, but they could get a place to live in town, they want to do that. Um, they should be able to do that if they live in Garfield County, not come in from somewhere else. Would you accept that as a amendment to your motion?
A- absolutely.
Okay, I'll, I'll admit my second.
Okay, great. All right, Paula.
Um, this is just to put this out there and to consider, there are people traveling, uh, for emergency needs and that type of stuff. Is there any kind of system for emergency vouchers? If somebody is having to go from one place to another and it's 10 o'clock at night, I just, you know, I'm trying to figure this out as well. We're on I-70. I support this motion. Um, I'm just trying to think of all the things that we're doing on the public health side and, emergency situations. And I don't know if there's anything, Deborah, that we put together to help people in those situations. I'm thinking of that because I, I heard recently of somebody whose, um, um, older mother fell and broke her hip and, she, you know, she felt like she had to leave and go help. And people are going to get into those situations. So I don't know if we have anything along that line.
Deborah is still muted. Um, but what I would say, and because I got to talk over her now because she's muted, was I think the way we would implement this is, uh, with, Deborah as the public health official for Glenwood Springs issuing an order tomorrow in furtherance of your motion. Um, and so on some of those very small nuances, if you give us a little discretion to try to, to address them, I think we will.
Okay. Did it better than I would have anyway.
Thank you, Deborah. Thank you, Deborah.
I, I think with that motion, we've established our own city public health department. So congratulations, Deborah.
Section 100 of the code.
All right. Um, seeing no other comments, let's call the question. Catherine.
Jorge's?
Yes.
Step? Willman?
Yes.
Golda?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hershey?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Item number 17, bathrooms for homeless population.
Okay. I think that is mostly, I'll, I will start it and then let you guys take over. There has been concern expressed by council members in there not being public facilities for homeless, our homeless population to use. We've shut down our regular restrooms due to, you know, concerns about staff cleaning them. We have stay-at-home orders, so we don't really have a vibrant downtown at the moment. We do have porta potties in four parks that can be used by our homeless population. I think the question is, is do you guys want more? And if you do, where do you want them? Just, we asked, you can't get hand washing stations right now. They are in back order probably until May. So all we have in these porta potties are hand sanitation, hand sanitizer. Does that capture pretty much what you wanted to start with, Shelley?
I think so. Yeah. Thank you, Deborah.
All right, I'll just open the floor up to comments. Steve Davis and then Shelley.
I have a question. So are you saying that there is no portable restroom facility in the downtown area currently?
Um, I think the closest one would be
I didn't hear that.
It would be where? I know downtown are very they have a history. I, I the what?
Couldn't hear that.
Oh, as you said, porta potties in downtown have a history.
Right.
Yeah, but it seems like after we built the porta potty that we did, or the, I mean, the, the permanent facility that we did, if you're closing that one, that you ought to at least have some alternative sitting next to it. People are going to go there and just go there.
And we can. I just wanted to hear that from you guys, because there's a lot emotion around porta potties downtown.
I think there used to be in normal times, there used to be some emotion about that, but that, these are not normal times. So at least I'll speak on my own behalf. The, the, the motion left the building about three weeks ago.
Right.
Sorry to jump in front. Charlie and then Shelley.
Do you have just a question? Where are the, you said there were four, and I missed if you said where they were. I know where the current ones, the porta potties.
Axteau, Sayer, Beltis, Sullivan, and Gregory Parks.
Where's Gregory? Where's Gregory Park? I forgot. North, North Glenwood.
West Glenwood.
Okay, I don't understand.
Shelley.
Okay, and I, I became concerned about this when I heard that, that, that we had closed down our restaurants and the parks. And I understand staff's concern for staff safety and having to clean those. But I also feel like we have a known homeless and transient population, and we, we need to have facilities out there for them to go because otherwise they, it's just a normal bodily function and they will go somewhere. To me, it's important that we do have facilities available. And I'm, I'm along the same thinking as Steve. I was thinking if we've closed that new downtown restaurant, then we should have a porta potty next to it. And I was hoping, it seems also important to have hand washing stations. But if we can't get those right now, it'd be great if we could get a couple on order. I think from everything I've read, the soap and water is more effective than the alcohol hand sanitizer. But so at least for that downtown location, possibly Centennial Park, which is closer to where Lift Up is operating, but I'm open to suggestions on other locations. But I do think we need at least one somewhere downtown.
Thanks, Paula.
This also, I was hoping Debbie Wild would be here or part of this conversation tonight, just the bigger homeless question and shelter and those kinds of things. I know we're getting into warmer weather. I know they did have the shelter place over in the old St. Stephen's Church, but I don't know if that's still going now that we're heading out of winter. So there seems to be a bigger question here that we should also be addressing.
If I can chime in a little bit on that, Paula, Debbie Wild has been giving us a lot of information, conversing with Deborah. And she's been working with some of the other groups in the valley that are working on that issue that she was working on formerly. And, and the county is now getting more involved. They have someone with their health department that will be working on this more actively.
Yeah, but it does feel like it's, this is a much bigger, and I really appreciate that you've brought this up, Shelley, because I do think we need to get porta potties around town. That's really important because otherwise they're, like you said, either going to go outside or they're going to use places like City Market, which opens that up to how much City Market would want to put up on. So I don't know if that's an April 16th discussion, but it would be great, Deborah, if Debbie could come and tell us what's going on. I've seen what the county's done so far, which is basically hand out information. From what I'm aware of, most of these homeless people aren't going to the county or looking on their phone or seeing that type of stuff. I just, I don't know what's happening with that population. So it'd be great to have some kind of conversation on it as a council.
And I think at that time, I would probably, you know, the, the the county has mainly focused on distributing information. It does sound like from some of the emails I gave you guys that, you know, they're going to potentially work with the hospital to figure out how to quarantine, quarantine people if they are sick. Above and beyond that, if you want us to take a active role in homeless solutions, you know, we will need to get that direction from you. I don't think there is a really organized effort to do something like that. There are conversations going on. There are groups that are trying to feed people. But as far as, I know, Paula, you had some questions this week about housing homeless individuals. Nothing like that is occurring or going to occur under the current model we have.
And, and I know other communities are looking at this as well. I know that I've seen some stuff from Carbondale where they're concerned because now their homeless no longer have access to the rec center for their showers. And all of this, underlying all of this is, is the potential for the spread of COVID-19 because we have a small population that could exacerbate it.
And I agree. I think I'm just trying to say, if you want us to take a more active role in these solutions, this would not be something a city of our size would typically do. I'm not against it at all. I just need to know how much the full council supports individual initiatives when it comes to this topic.
Shelley.
I would just like to add to that with some of the information, Paula and Deborah, you have the emails from Debbie Wild. And maybe it would be great if she could come and possibly give an update at our next meeting. But I think the emphasis right now is on public safety and public health and being able to add some critical facilities for our transient homeless population. Again, hand washing, hand sanitize, hand sanitizer and restroom facilities or bathroom facilities. That, it sounds like the recommendations that I saw coming through from Debbie Wild's conversations up and down the valley are this, this isn't a time to open a homeless shelter and increase gathering of people. They're almost safer where they're out. There do seem to be a lot of quite a bit of assistance for food and that kind of thing. And, and the typical organizations like Catholic Charities, Feed My Sheep, and those organizations, Salvation Army, that have continually supported that population are doing so now also. So right now, I think there's adequate food and that kind of thing. At least that's the message that I was reading. But so I'm looking at this more from a public, public health aspect at this point. And possibly we can get in, get an update from Debbie if there's more that the city could do. But right now, I think the emphasis is on public health and also keeping people that are on that poverty line and that are at risk of losing their current housing from losing their housing, thus growing our homeless population. I think that might be a place where the city can help get information out and, and support that kind of thing. The other, the other emphasis would be on getting information out to the homeless population and transients. And they suggested possibly a couple of weatherproof posters that could be posted maybe at the library or near the, the public restrooms downtown, places where people might go and be able to see that and understand what the current restrictions are, how you stay safe and stay isolated and those kinds of things.
All right. Um, where are we at? Do we?
Porta potty next to the existing downtown bathroom or probably somewhere in that area. And then maybe Centennial is what I've heard. Hand washing stations where we can get them, which I did ask Brian to go ahead and ask for some.
Great.
I don't know that we need a formal vote. Is that enough direction from staff or from us to staff about what our intentions are?
I, I can handle that.
Can I give you kind of a thumbs up? Or do we want a, okay. Wonderful. All right. Thanks, everybody. Next one. Why everybody's here. Number 18, consider emergency ordinance terminating Rafta service in Glenwood Springs.
I can just queue this up as to the discussion. A week ago, Thursday, we could go from today, I guess, Jonathan, the Rafta Board voted for, or 4-3 to suspend service, but needed a super majority to actually do that. So service continued. They have cut back dramatically. Ridership numbers, I believe, right now on the I, or on the Highway 82 corridor for, excuse me, for Monday, the 30th, where with the lowered service level was about mid 700 riders, I think. One of the things that prompted this discussion tonight is Rifle last night adopted a resolution suspending service from Rafta and Rifle. Rifle is not a member of Rafta formally. The hogback route serves them, but they don't actually contribute. It's in part money from the Garfield County supplies as well as just Rafta funding that route. So I think with, with that, the email that went out to the Rafta Board last night was that they would cut back on service on the hogback routes. Tell stopping itself. Along with that, the other thing that's going on that I think has an implication for us here is that the C-Doc Director suspended service of bus staying, which is also a regional transit service statewide. She, in her comments doing that, she noted that moving people in between communities, that was not the purpose of the governor's order at stay-at-home and shelter-in-place. Or the stay-at-home order, rather. I know that there has been, you know, from Rafta's perspective, they, they represent a number of, of entities up and down the valley. Picken County entities in particular feel very strongly that they, they still need what they view as critical service workers to come up, the people who are working in the grocery stores and, and things like that. Recognizing that most healthcare workers have been on a directive for some time now that they need to be not taking public transportation. They need to be driving their own car. And in fact, I think that's a condition of most of the hospitals now that they can't take public transportation to get to work. So that's kind of the background. So this has been evolving over the last several days since the Rafta meeting last Thursday, and I believe, and Jonathan can jump in with more details, but I believe Rafta is holding an emergency meeting tomorrow. Is that right, Jonathan?
Not emergency. It's a, just minor clarification. The meeting happened last Friday. And at that, and at that meeting, it was determined from the Rafta Board that we need to be meeting regularly, weekly, not, not monthly throughout this crisis to continue to reevaluate where we are. So
Oh, got it. Same thing. So that's all the background of sort of what's going on. And of course, Wright Glenwood was suspended now a couple of weeks ago. So that's, that's really the genesis of how that got here. And I know that it was just yesterday, Jonathan recognized that, I think it was a topic that was important enough. And certainly he needs some direction going into the Rafta Board meeting tomorrow as to where the council is at on the issue. I don't know that I would recommend taking an action tonight because there is the board meeting tomorrow, although, you know, we have a couple of weeks until our next meeting. So it's a cart and a horse issue we have going on here. But anyway, with that, Jonathan, I've rambled long enough. I'll turn it over to you to fill in all the details.
Yeah, and, and I see a lot of hands up, but you know, how this, I think Carl kind of queued it up well. And, you know, this, the, the kind of the two impetus points, and I've heard from several of you as well as I know we've heard from some citizens, and not that social media needs to dictate everything, but there has been a lot of comments about why is this running? And so, you know, I think Carly had a, a pretty good point. I, I, I would like clear direction on how to present to the Rafta Board tomorrow. Shelley and I both, gosh, Shelley's the alternate, and I think it's, it's, it's powerful to have both of us in the room talking about where Glenwood lands on this. And so I don't want to wait two weeks if we're going to make a decision for the, on behalf of Glenwood Springs residents. And it's pretty darn easy to call a special meeting. So I guess I would like some guidance and direction from everybody about what they would like to see. One, communicated to Rafta tomorrow. And two, if they would, depending on the outcome, I will report back. And if we, if several of you would like to have a special meeting to process and to digest that information and to make further recommendations or restrictions, you know, every day is a weekend and no day is a weekend in this new world because we're all at home in various degrees. So if we want to do that, I guess I would rather have that meeting sooner rather than later if we're going to reexamine something like Rifle where they had a shutdown of Rafta in their community. So I don't know if that provides additional context, but I see a bunch of hands up. And I'll just take them in the order that I see them in. Steve Davis. You're muted.
Yeah, I am muted. Thanks, Jonathan. You know, there is no way in hell I would get on any tran, public transportation at this point in time. I don't even like walking into a grocery store with only 25 people in it. I think that the Rafta Board really should do some soul searching and do the right thing tomorrow. And in light of the fact that they have a meeting tomorrow, I would make a motion, although I would like comment from everybody, that we table any, any action on this until after their meeting.
Thank you for that, Steve. Just for clarification, because we do have public, and I do want to take public comment. If there's questions for staff, let's, let's focus on questions for staff right now and then take it to the public. We do have Dan Blankenship, Executive Director of Rafta in the audience, as well as Art from Newcastle. Riddle, excuse me, Art Riddle, second Art. I'd love to hear from both of them from the public as well. So if we have questions for staff or for me as a representative or for or for me as representative or from Shelley as alternate, let's focus on that. So I still see three hands up. I see two. I see one. What's your question?
Sketch that out for me. If Glenwood terminates service in Glenwood, how does, how does that roll out through the rest of Rafta if it continues service? And so it would be Newcastle to Carbondale to Aspen kind of thing. Is that what we're looking at?
That's Carl.
Um, yeah, I think that that would, that may be something that Dan can address for you. I mean, I think that what it would be from our standpoint is that we would be issuing an order that, that public transit couldn't pick up or drop off people in the city limits of Glenwood. That would probably be the way I would phrase it. And so how they operationally worked around that, I think would be their call. So that, that would probably be what would happen.
And is there any other commuter service out there? I saw a taxi driving around the other day. I'm just curious if you guys know of any.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think one of the things that we're struggling with on a statewide basis is you know, what's regional and what's local, if you will. Certainly, the it, when it's running its full extent between parachute and, excuse me, parachute and in Aspen, Rafta is truly a regional transit authority in the same way that bus staying would be connecting. I mean, they're going as far as, you know, you could take, you know, bus staying from here in the Eagle County and into Summit County and you're crossing three counties, which is little bit of Eagle there in Rafta's territory, but they're crossing two, two very different counties. And that are being, you know, that are operating in two very different worlds in terms of how they're dealing with the COVID-19 issues. So I, I think that's one of the struggles is that yes, it is a commuter service under the governor's order. Should anybody be commuting? One question. And to what extent should we be moving people between communities like that? I mean, the other thing I find fascinating is that the transit numbers inside of Aspen, which is a town, you can really walk pretty easily. We're like 350 or 312 riders on Monday going around Aspen, which, which, you know, puzzles me to no end if you're, if you're under a stay at home order. So.
Thanks.
Thanks, Paula. Shelley.
I just have questions on this, I guess. Are we in the question phase?
Well, you know, we, I think we're in the question phase for staff. And then I think, just, I think Art Riddle is going to potentially speak. And so if you have questions for Rafta, I think Art can speak on behalf of Rafta as well. So
Okay.
I guess fire away and Art can take it when I go to public comment.
My biggest questions are, do we have an idea of, you know, who our ridership is? And, and I mean, I think as far as the statewide order, public transportation is considered essential service for that. And to the extent that we have people in our community that have no other way to get to their job or to possibly get groceries, that's where I have questions on that. Do we have a good idea if we're cutting that service off? Are we literally cutting people off from their way to make a living or, or get the services that they need? Just putting that out there.
A general question. All right. Any other questions for staff? Seen none at this time. I will open up for public comment. Art, hold on one sec. Sorry, I'm getting some technical issues. A lot to talk. So Art, you're using an older version of Zoom. Choose to promote to panelist to allow Art Riddle to talk. Art, you're going to be a panelist here for a sec. Okay. So jump on in. We need to hear from you.
Can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Really? Can you see me?
Not at all.
Perfect. Wow. Two hours later. Thank you. I first, I, I got several comments. One, my first comment is it's okay to have the rifle golf course open and the Glenwood Springs Golf Course open, but we're talking about terminating ridership to go up valley for essential services like working in grocery stores, pharmacies and some other issues. To me, that's a little disturbing, but Rafta has taken, has taken, and I hope Dan Blankenship will chime in on this too, has taken every precaution in the world to sustain not just public safety, but safety of our staff at Rafta. We, we have modeled rear entrance in the bus, free fares, so there's no exchange of cash or anything else and social distancing in seats where a driver can determine whether or not this is feasible or not. And also I want to mention that the Summit Stage is back up and running again. Echo in Eagle County is running. RTD in Denver metropolitan area is still running. All, all of these entities are, have cut back, of course, but Rafta is no different from these. In fact, we have gotten praise from the Picken County Health Department and the Garfield County Health Department as far as our safety requirements are concerned. And there's also major disinfecting of the buses going on every single day. And Shelley, thank you for your comments. Since I'm looking at you.
Shelley, you're muted.
I was just going to say, I appreciate your comments and everything that Rafta has done to keep their riders and their drivers safe.
The other thing I want to add is a lot of these people, I, I'm not, I, I could get, I could get bitten the butt for saying this. I'm not so concerned about the ridership in the Newcastle Silt or Rifle area because our numbers are way down. I am more concerned about a regional situation where people from Glenwood Springs need to go up valley and especially the Latino population, that many of them probably don't have alternative ways to get back to work.
All right. Thank you very much, Art. Appreciate that. We have two other people. Dan Blankenship, love to hear your comments. And you're muted. So go in the bottom left corner and unmute yourself.
Does that mean?
That is, you're good. Danny of the floor.
I can't hear Dan, Jonathan.
I cannot either. He is unmuted on my end. It looks like, nope, he just muted himself now. Try to unmute yourself one more time, Dan. There you go. Now speak.
Maybe you're clicking. Volume up on your machine, Dan. Clicking.
I hear clicking. Sorry, guys. Thanks for your patience. I just really want to hear from Dan. So if we can give him a little bit of a.
And Jonathan, can I respond just real quickly to something that Art said while we're waiting for Dan? Just very briefly.
Sure.
I, I don't like this equivocating. It's like between golf and basketball and tennis and transportation, you know, I can't believe a golf course is open, but I can't go to the grocery store. It's, it's an unfair comparison. We all want, whether it's Mr. Riddle or Mr. Blankenship or myself or you, want everyone to be safe. So I hope Mr. Riddle appreciates that.
Okay. Dan, do you have headphones in? Because maybe if you have headphones in, if you could unplug them and try just with your computer voices. Okay. You, Dan, why are you working, trying to figure that? I'm really sorry. I, I have another public comment from Gary Vick. So I'm going to recognize him. And if you're able to just keep talking at some point, if you come through, I just really want to hear from you if possible.
In other Zoom meetings, sometimes if people call in by phone, come in by phone instead of using their computer, we're able to. Just so you, I've had that.
That'd be great. Dan, I sent you a, I believe I sent you a meeting invite in an earlier email. So if you click on that, it'll give a call in number. If you're able to call in with that number, it's star nine to talk. So if you're allowed, or if you're able to do that and want to call in, that'd be great. In the meantime, I'll take comment from Gary Vick. Gary, unmute yourself bottom left hand corner. There's a mute button.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
I can. Perfect. I could. You muted yourself again. Try to unmute yourself.
Again?
Nope, you're good. You're perfect now. Great.
Okay, thank you. I would just, I've, I've been watching the proceedings tonight and just had a comment on the RTD travel. I really kind of agree with Steve Davis that it, I would be hard pressed to get on public transportation right now. But then again, I don't have to. And until you can answer Shelley's questions, which revolve around how does a person who has no transportation get groceries? And how does a person get to work who may work up valley in the Aspen area? Remember, you know, we all have this dream of living in Glenwood and working in Glenwood, but Glenwood is essentially a bedroom community to Carbondale, Basalt and Aspen. And if you have essential workers that are not able to get to their jobs, until you can answer and satisfy Shelley's questions, I gotta be honest, you got no business voting on this tonight. And that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Vick. Appreciate it. Dan, have you figured out an ability to call in or anything on your end? Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, Dan, I really want to hear from you. So understanding that technology is a challenge for us all. I will bring it back to council for comments and/or emotion. And Dan, if you're able to jump in at some point, I think it's really important to hear from you. We'll jump back to you. So apologize. I have Rick and then Charlie.
Okay. I appreciate everything that's been said and you asked for direction, Jonathan. If I were to give direction tonight, I would say that I would offer a motion to suspend Rafta service in Glenwood Springs. I'm not going to make that motion now. I think you have a meeting tomorrow. But let me just give you a little rationale for why I'm thinking this way. One is that a week ago, a little bit more than a week ago, there were 17 presumptive or maybe symptoms consistent with COVID-19 among Rafta drivers. One was on a ventilator. And I realized that Rafta has taken steps to insulate their drivers to sort of encapsulate them from people who may be infected or asymptomatic riding their buses. Well, that in itself is sort of an interesting dilemma. I mean, it's good for the drivers, but you know, I'm not so sure that toting people around who are asymptomatic or maybe symptomatic is necessarily in anybody's best interest. We've got a problem also, I think, with equivocating, I guess, that Tony used that word, but with sort of RTD in the metro area, other bus services. And I think that that's, you know, fine and dandy, but do we have a plan for how other people can get to the grocery store or other essential workers? You know, I'm not so sure that that's Glenwood's obligation to do that. I think Glenwood's obligation is to be sure that we're not complicit in providing sort of a conveyor belt for people to come into our community, much like we voted on the VRBO situation a little bit ago. We ought to be limiting to the extent possible, any sort of transportation, any sort of conveyance that even raises that probability. Is it our responsibility to be sure that workers can get up valley? Well, you know, I think that we've been good partners and I think our city council came down pretty strongly in support of 17A last year. And so, you know, to even ask that question really doesn't suit, I think, the good work that we put into Rafta and the faith that we have in Rafta is a service and a benefit to people in the Roaring Fort Valley and the Colorado River Valley. So, you know, I think that we might be asking the wrong question here. I'm not going to bring that motion up tonight, but if you go to a board meeting tomorrow and by, by virtue of Rafta's needing a super majority to make a decision that's in everybody's best interest, except for the dwindling ridership and that they have to have, you know, almost everybody around the table agree, I don't think that that's going to happen. And so if you come back from this board meeting and it just happens that it's going to be the same vote that was taken last week, I would ask the mayor to call an emergency meeting directly thereafter for this motion that I would make at that point to not allow Rafta to operate in Glenwood Springs. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rick, for that.
Mr. Mayor, this is Art Riddle again. Could I comment on what Rick just said?
You know, Art, we, if you are relaying information from Dan, that's, that's great, but why don't we take comment? I really appreciate any input you have, but if we could finish comments on council first and then I'll turn it back to you for, for another word. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Charlie.
Yeah, my, my thought of this is kind of twofold. I agree, we don't want to be as reckless a conveyor to the disease up and down the valley. On the other hand, I also agree with Shelley. We need to, I think Carl used the term critical service workers. And an idea that I had the other day, and I discussed briefly with you, Mr. Mayor, was the concept that if we need to get critical service workers up and down the valley, that the employers could provide some sort of an identification card and Rafta could reduce its services and only let people with the employer issued identification cards for critical service workers ride those buses. And that's kind of a mid ground, but seems to me maybe one way in which we could get people where they need to be and get people to help out, I mean, grocery store workers and look at this, we're talking about people that are serving a real dangerous environment. They're doing that. But if we can get them to work to, to do those types of things, we should do that. And that would be the message I would give to Rafta if I was at that meeting tomorrow. And following what Rick says, I would have no problem scheduling a special meeting for Monday to discuss this issue if there's a need to after the meeting tomorrow.
Thank you, Charlie. Paula, Tony and then Shelley.
It's funny, as Charlie was saying that, I had been thinking the same thing of vouchers or something along that line for critical workers or commuters. I am concerned like Shelley of people who really rely on public transportation. It's funny that we've spent a lot of time trying to push for a less, a population, less reliant on their vehicles and more reliant on public transportation and getting around by foot and that type of stuff. And now we're asking them, okay, just stay in place. I, I don't know. Is that a delivery service for food? I mean, there, we've talked about so many things tonight that kind of overlap. And all have different levels of our big concern of this spread of this contagion. And I've expressed it a few times tonight, but I do, I am concerned about the commuters. And I am concerned about making sure people have access to things that they need, like food and that type of thing. So I, similar to Rick and Charlie, would like to see what the Rafta Board comes up with tomorrow. And I am willing to do a special meeting if we have to after that.
Thank you, Paula. Tony and then Shelley.
Well, it took a national crisis, but I agree 120% with what Rick Voorhees just said. He really, he really nailed it. You know, we have to. You know, we have to protect the people of Glenwood Springs. I appreciate, I know what Mr. Blankenship would say. I have a great deal of respect for him. And I could almost speak for him. They provide an essential service, Mr. Mayor, for people moving up and down. And it is the, you know, that it's the second largest bus system in the entire state, as you know. And it's just a great system, but these are just not normal times. So I would agree with what Rick said, and I guess Steve sort of made this motion earlier that we just wait to see what happens tomorrow, but I'm happy to meet tomorrow night, Saturday night, Monday night, whenever we can. I'm available to address these issues. I also want to thank the mayor for bringing this to the forefront and having a courageous vote that was probably not a super popular vote at first on the Rafta Board. Jonathan, your, your idea about public safety and, you know, I'm sympathetic for these, to these people. But as the, as the city attorney said, doctors and nurses, my friend is a nurse, she is not in, at Aspen Valley Hospital. She is not riding the bus, trust me, to the hospital. They won't let her. She can't be on it. She has to stay safe and healthy and we have to keep our community healthy. And, you know, like a river, this, this bus system can carry illness and we have to look into this and make sure it's right. So I would agree to wait to see what happens tomorrow, but I am supportive of you, Mr. Mayor, in your endeavor here. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley.
I'll just say, I appreciate everybody's comments on this and I have a full understanding of how complex this issue is. And it's a tough decision to make. So I will defer right now and, and wait for the Rafta meeting tomorrow too, and look forward to that conversation. I will just say that I think that Rafta has made every effort to clean their buses and to keep their drivers safe and to have policies in place to keep the riders safe. And, you know, I can picture riding transit quite a bit myself, that you could ride a bus, especially if it's not crowded, be able to get on that bus and do most of the ride and really not have to touch much of a service, of a surface in the bus if you don't want to and be able to get off. And so I, I think with the cleanliness going on with the buses, it's possible to envision that it's their, them in and of themselves are not huge places for that to spread. And I do think of our valley as one community. So I don't think of this as a regional service that we're traveling between communities as much. But it's tough because we're in a critical time, we're in a crisis here and would shut down for two weeks to a month be a step worth taking. I'm still, I'm still torn on that. So I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
And I guess I'll give my comments. Thank you very much, Shelley and everybody for those comments. I think, you know, what I have heard is let's see what tomorrow brings and we're not ready to make any declarations at this point. Similar to what Rifle has done. And so I appreciate that. I think he gives the Rafta Board, which Shelley and I are members of, a little bit more breathing room and an opportunity to have a conversation without, you know, the proverbial gun to our heads. So, so I thank you on that. I think I have some, some good direction. I will and Shelley will report back. If you're not able to join us at the, the meeting, it's a, it's a public meeting online, much is like this. So if you're, you're interested. Art, correct me when I give you the last word, but it is, I believe at nine o'clock tomorrow. I don't have my account.
Nine o'clock to 10:30.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can I make another comment, please, real quick?
Yeah, let me just finish my comments real quick and then, then I'll have, let you have the last word, sir. You know, everybody, the Rafta Board is, other than my own city council, the finest board I have ever served on. They are fantastic people. They are intelligent, caring, thoughtful. No one is doing or making decisions based on, on politics or, or what is good for them right now. And I just, I can't say enough, and this is not me, just, you know, because Art's in the room and, and Dan Blankenship's in the room either. I, I'll say this to them, I'll say this publicly. I spoke to the Public Health Director of Garfield County last week and she said, she made the unsolicited comment that she had never seen a emergency preparedness plan, planned, drafted and executed to the extent that Rafta had done. They were doing everything within their power. I think that my, my challenge is, is that social distancing is a part of it. And, and the other part is going up and down the valley and bringing people to and from different communities. And I think that that is partially why we're having this conversation. I feel like I have direction and I also feel like maybe I'm hearing Dan Blankenship.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hear you, Dan. This is wonderful.
Great.
I love technology.
I would love to hear from you right now. If that's okay with everybody, I know we, this is a little unorthodox, but I'd love to hear from Dan and then give Art the last word. Because I feel like I have direction so far unless these comments change it. So go ahead, Daniel, the floor.
Well, thank you, Jonathan, and thank you, members of the city council. First, let me just say that I, I respect everybody and I know that what you're trying to do is make decisions for your community that you feel are in your community's best interest. And we live in unprecedented times and these are difficult decisions to make. I am torn, obviously, because I recognize that whenever anybody goes out of their house or goes anywhere, they run the risk of contracting the virus. But at the same time, I know that we are all going out of our houses to get essential things that we need. Food. We have to go to the doctor, we have to go to the pharmacy and so forth. And then there are people who need to go to work. And I'm, I have a car, my wife has a car, you probably all have cars. And, and, and most people do have cars, but there's, there's a significant number of people that use our service that don't have an option. And what we've been doing as we've gradually stepped down our service levels to our bare bones, phase three plan, is try to track our ridership, try to see where people are getting on and off the bus. And just two days ago, we implemented a SMS text survey that we could send out to passengers on the bus and they can text us some answers to some questions that we asked them. Because the question has come up, well, why are people riding this service? Why do they have to get out of their house and so forth? And so we asked them a few simple questions. What is the purpose of your trip? Is it travel to work, travel to get food, travel to receive healthcare, travel to receive medicine? And we've only got a limited amount of responses, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 so far, because we just pushed this out. I think it was yesterday or the day before. And so 50% of the people that responded, and again, it was maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of 30, said that they were traveling to get food. 38% said they were traveling for work purposes. 8% said they were traveling for healthcare, 4% for other. And so then we also asked them, if Raft were not available, what other means of travel do you have available? And the responses for that were Rafta only, my personal automobile, an automobile that I can borrow, carpool, taxi, Uber, walk, bike, other. So in walk, there's 33% that said they could do that. 4% said they could carpool, 13% said personal automobile, 38% said Rafta only, 4% said bike and 8% said other. So there are a significant number who say that for their trip, Rafti, Rafta was the only means that they had to make that trip on. Again, we don't have a lot of data, but what I, I guess I was saying to Shelley this morning and to Jonathan is, is that what we're trying to do is get information for the Rafta Board. So they not only know how many people are riding, where they're getting on and off the bus, but also the purposes for which they're riding, so that they can make an informed decision. It, it takes time to get this information. And, and we're working very hard to keep the buses virus sided every night, to keep our facilities on a regular schedule of fogging and so forth. Our attendance rate is improving, the number of employees out due to symptoms of COVID-19 or because they've been exposed has come down to about 5% of the total workforce of 365 employees right now. And it was at one time 10%. So actually, I think it was 3% today and it's been as high as 10, which is a positive sign for us. But we have a board of directors, we have a super voting, a super majority voting requirement. I serve at the will of the board. Right now, the will of the board is that we be in these phase three service reduction levels that we're providing until something changes. And I believe that Paula was asking, what happens if Glenwood drops out? Well, most of the trips, I think, on the hogback bus, and it just runs from Rifle to Glenwood Springs, have the origin or destination in Glenwood Springs. Not too many people are riding that bus to go up Valley. There may be a few, but most are going to Glenwood Springs. So having a service that runs from Silt to Newcastle would be maybe the world's best first class bus service between Silt and Newcastle, but there's not a lot of demand for that, that service. So that would pretty much mean that that service would not operate. It would also mean if the board, Rafta Board said continue operating, then we would not pick up or drop off people in Glenwood Springs. We could go to Carbondale and, and then operate between Carbondale, Carbondale and Aspen and Snowmass Village. There are a significant number of people that want to go to and from Glenwood Springs based on the information that, and, and some are internal trips since you have, have discontinued the ride Glenwood Springs service. But as of, I believe this would have been Monday, there were 176 people either getting on or off the bus in Glenwood Springs. We have data that shows where people are getting on and off. We don't know whether those are internal to Glenwood Springs or whether those are people that are coming from, for example, someplace up Valley, Carbondale, a lot of people who live in Carbondale come and shop in Glenwood, et cetera. But at least we do have a handle on the numbers right now and we'll have more data as time goes on. I don't want to go on and on here, but, you know, we're doing our best to try to meet the needs of people who, for whom transit is kind of a last resort. And, you know, if you decide at some point that you're going to shut her down, then, you know, the Rafta Board may say, well, it doesn't make sense for us to keep going or some other community may follow your lead. I don't know. But I respect what you're doing and, and I know how difficult these decisions are. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. I really appreciate that. And I really appreciate you taking the time tonight and sticking around. Art, in the, you, you run a very efficient meeting at Rafta, and so I will give you the last word, but I'll ask you to make it quick.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity and, and I'm very happy that Dan was able to finally get on. I wanted to address Rick Voorhees' statement about the Rafta illnesses. But Dan chimed in on that and he's a lot more astute about that than I am. But one thing I do want to mention is that Rafta also operates the traveler service for disabled and seniors. So that's another consideration to think about in, in your decisions. If that's terminated due to the situation, just something to think about. And that's not a happy thought and, and I understand the essence of the situation, both sides of the fence. It's, it's very difficult. This is totally unprecedented. And I hope we never see anything like this again in our lifetimes. But again, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Art. Appreciate it. And Rick has a comment. If we can make it real quick, Rick, I appreciate it.
I'll give you 23 seconds. How's that?
Perfect.
So, you know, I want to thank you, Art, for your statement, like statements there. I think that in my wildest imagination, I wasn't thinking about shutting down the traveler service. I was thinking about the buses with other people on them. So just, just for the record. Thank you.
I think that was 18 seconds, Rick. Nice job.
Not bad, huh?
All right. So I, I feel like I have a wait and see direction. And I think Shelley and I will confer after the Rafta Board meeting tomorrow. You're all invited to participate. It's online from nine to 10:30. So you can see for yourself, really appreciate anybody who can do that, to do that. Charlie and I will kind of collaborate and type up our impressions of the conversation, get that out to everybody. And then I will wait to hear if, if several people would like to request a special session and when that would be. I'll wait to hear from that tomorrow afternoon.
Jonathan, could you set up the link to that meeting?
Yes, I can. I don't know how yet, but I will find out.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
That Rafta's webs.
Yeah, and if I can, if I can just clarify for council that if you're going to watch the meeting, just watch the meeting. Because I don't want to have to notice it as a council meeting since it's less than 24 hours away because it's 9:40 tonight and they're meeting in 12 hours. So that would be my only ask is to just be an observer, as if you were watching it on TV from home. Not as if you were in real time with each other having a discussion. And don't do that either.
I moved to a
Right. All right. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Art and Dan. I appreciate that. And this is really, there's no hard, there's no easy discussions right now in these hard times. So. Okay, next item. Thank you, everybody. Reports from city administration, city manager.
Okay, just very quickly, we're hoping to get all of our boards and commissions up and virtual meetings running again in May. I think we're going more towards, I mean, we'll have emergency situations come up and, but we're going more towards hopefully a more getting out of emergency and more into planning for the future. So a more thoughtful phase of this disaster. Along those lines, today we started, we had a roundtable discussion with local banks about how we could help and there were no conclusions there, but that's kind of where we're trying to get to now is looking towards the recovery, looking towards what happens if it takes a long time to recover. Just kind of, that's where we are. Thank you. And thank you to my staff.
Great.
Thanks, guys. Carl.
I don't really have, I think, anything else to add tonight. I will say, I guess, I thought Deborah's going to mention it, but just it appears that things are slowing down on the RMR front with BLM right now. We'll push out some information on what it looks like revised timelines will be. And that's probably going to be a PNC memo because I have some thoughts on why those are getting pushed right now. So anyway, but that's good. So that's all I have.
All right. And finally, we have a, a letter that I would like everybody to endorse. I'm asking, I'm calling on people to endorse. It's a, a letter to Governor Polis asking that the funds that have been allocated to the state of Colorado that are approximately 2.3 billion for public health, the public health emergency. The way it was, and Carl, you can, can help limp me along here, but basically it does not specify that these funds would go to any communities under $500,000 in, or 100, 500,000 people in population. And so we're asking the governor to use his discretion to allocate it out in a formula that, that federal funds like this are typically allocated out. So Carl, help me unbutcher what I just said.
Sums it up. I think it is. It, it really is just trying to get a more equitable allocation if we possibly can for the, the stimulus package that came out. By and large, on the face of it, the, this third stimulus package doesn't leave a lot for smaller communities of rural America. You know, West Slope of Colorado doesn't have 500,000 people on it, which would be, let alone, you know, one, one county or one. which would be, let alone, you know, one, one county or one municipality. So that's really all it is.
I just a comment, if I may, you know, if you've read the CMBELL releases last couple of days, they're working on this issue too. They're very cognizant of, of the, it appears to be very cognizant of the problems with small communities. I certainly support sending this letter.
I do too. And thank you, whoever wrote it up and put it together. Thanks for doing that. Sounds good.
Our lobbyists.
Great. Appreciate them.
I support it as well.
Steve does. And Rick, I see a thumbs up. There we go. Well, I see, there we go.
Background, background, background noise.
Yes. Yes, Jonathan.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. It looks like we have exhausted everybody and exhausted our agenda. So with that, I bang the gavel. Thank you very much, everybody. And I appreciate the attendance online as well.
Thank you, Catherine and Stafford. Today worked well.
Take care.
Good night, everybody.
Night, night.